Has the invocation. Good morning, everybody. Welcome. We have a big crowd here this morning. I'm honored to invite Reverend Beckely, Beckely. He is, you know, in the Tampa Bay area, we have a large Ethiopian population and I'm lucky enough to be friends with many of them. And my son did a study on Ethiopia a few years ago and it was honored to take him to the Reverend's church over in East Tampa, kind of Brandon area. And it's really a cultural experience. If you haven't done it, please, please join that. And I'll tell you one other thing. I was lucky enough to go to Ethiopia a few years ago. And if you don't know, how many of you seen Raiders of the Lost Ark? Anybody seen the movie? The Ethiopians believe, and the Reverend can tell you the story, you can Google it, the Ethiopians believe that the ark is actually in Ethiopia, northern Ethiopia, in a church. And so, and there are copies of the ark that are made in Israel that are in each Ethiopian church around the world. So, I'll leave that at that. But the Reverend was born in Ethiopia. After graduating from the Theological Seminary in Addis Ababa, he went on to serve the Ethiopian Orthodox Church in Jerusalem. Later, he studied theology and philosophy in Bucharest. He moved to the United States in 1985 as a refugee and has raised two children in the Tampa Bay area. In 1992, he established Saint Mary's Ethiopian Orthodox Church here in Tampa and has been given, giving spiritual assistance and guidance to members of his community for over 20 years. Thank you, please.
I'm delighted and honored to be here today to give this invocation. Let us pray. Almighty God, the Creator of all creations, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessing. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together here today. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is filled with wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our goal, our duty and responsibility from this day on and forever and ever. Amen.
Dean Felder?
Here.
Gooz?
Here.
Maniscalco?
Here.
Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
And Beer. Here. Okay. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda and addendum to the agenda? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this would be the opportunity for council members to take up any issues that they wish to relative to today's agenda if they want to make any changes.
Okay. Okay, then, may I move for approval of the agenda? Anybody wish to do so? Okay, we have a, and Ms. Jan, go ahead. Sugar.
I'm sorry. Jan McLean, the office of the city attorney. I'm here with regard to the removal of item number 45. And to seek a recommendation, believe that council would be providing.
Okay.
That, so Ben, we have, I know that the 29th of August is kind of big, but I think that we have to bring this up before we talk about any budget process because this item that the city attorney's assistant just spoke about, Jan McLean, will have some funding needed and to be discussed because it's part of this operation that is about, the water and other things that go with it are part of the funding mechanism, and that's on the 5th of September. And we should have this workshop on the 29th on this item so that everybody's on the same page. If this is not heard and the funding process goes, there's no funding for something. And if it's not, it's not right to, in my opinion anyway, to make sure that the items are heard before so that the funding, if passes, and then you have another fight at the apple whether you want to fund it or not. But, so if I may, I'd make a motion, I'm the chairman at the end.
You may now, and we wish to discuss it if need be.
Okay. Chairman, I move that the council has a workshop to discuss the potential future of water source to ensure safe, reliable, and adequate supply of water for the city of Tampa, August the 28th, which is the same item, 29th, I'm sorry, with the same item that the Jan McLean just spoke about.
Okay. Any discussion, Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Definitely a needed workshop. I wanted to stress to staff that, a couple of things, and I mentioned this to them yesterday in discussion, that when, when they come to us on that workshop, and that's evening, correct?
Yeah.
I think that was, I think that was the preference of the community, was to do it in the evening. I think we have one here, one hearing that night.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, looking at the cal, on August 29th, you have a city council evening session, which is your second evening session of the month, which is relative to alcoholic beverage. Presently, here's what you have. You have five items. According to your calendar, you have two alcoholic beverage special use hearings and two land rezoning hearings. So you have four items set for 6:00 PM presently. Now, you can start your workshop earlier if you wish at 5:00, if that's council's pleasure, or you can add this as the first item, or however you wish to produce your agenda.
Mr. Shelby, if we start at 5:00, and then we can open the public hearings at 6:00, even if we continue the 5:00, maybe it might go till 7:00 or something like that, that we can push off the, those land use hearings a little bit later.
To know that those hearings have to be heard sometime after 6:00, anytime after 6:00, but obviously, if the meeting does run longer, the people who are the petitioners on those cases have to be aware that the hearings might not be heard exactly at 6:00 if you run over. So we'd make that aware to them as best we can.
Well, I think it's important, and maybe it doesn't have to be the 29th, maybe it's the 28th or 27th, but I think it's important that we have this workshop in the evening because I think it's an extremely important issue, both environmentally as well as financially to the community. It's $350 million potentially. So it's important that the community has an opportunity to be here. But the other thing I wanted to stress is when we do, when we do schedule it, that the staff come in and give us a detailed justification, and I know you know this, Charlie, because you've been doing this a long, long time, but a detailed justification about why we need, why we will need more water 10 years from now, or eight years from now, or whenever it is. Not just where, what that water source is going to be, but why we need more water. And I think that's really important, like, first step.
I'm not disagreeing at all, Mr. Dig Felder, if I may. And also, let me clarify that motion, that motion that I made was 29th of August at anytime after 5:00 PM. So whatever the council decides later on, I think we're safe there. On August the 29th, anytime after 5:00 PM, the evening of the year 2019.
Councilman Carlson.
And just to add to that, my colleague here, in the, in the motion, I think said new sources. And I watched the video from the meeting while I was out, and the, the staff since that meeting changed the language in the proposal that they were going to put in today so that it would more talk about new sources than, remember, there was a line that Councilman Dingfelder pointed out that, in essence, said they were going to sell one option. So what I understand they're going to do when they come back is to present at least four options and adequately look at the, or objectively look at the alternatives and talk about the health issues, environmental issues, and the, the cost issues related to all of them. And at that point, hopefully, we'll get public input, and then we can make an educated decision about priorities going forward.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just on that, no.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, and this is at 5:00 on the 29th.
Can you cap that to 5:00?
We'll notice, we'll notice it at 5:00.
Yeah, and I think that's fine.
Whatever you wish. That's fine.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then, one last thing I wanted to do, and wait, if I may, one last thing I wanted to do was, Friday, 54, was to move this, have someone make a motion, and this is why I would request this, before our hearings to take place after the consent agenda, because this is information that we should probably hear before we move on any further quasi-judicial matters. So to move 54, functionally, after 28, so, yep, before 29. Would anyone like to make that motion? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And did you, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir, Mr. or Councilman Dingfelder.
Do you have my phone on here?
Oh, I know, yep.
And on the, on the addendum, Mr. Chairman, I had asked to pull 12, 14, 28, and 46. I have satisfactory answers on 14 and 28. So if you want to strike those, leave them on the consent, 14 and 28, and I'll, we'll just pull 12 and 46 at council's discretion.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and we'll, we'll take those up. Okay, so may I have a motion or approval of the agenda and the addendum? We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we finally get to our ceremonial activities.
Sorry, one last thing, just to be able to close the loop on Ms. McLean's request, if you can remove item 45 from the agenda at this time.
Motion, anyone, motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Gooz, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Now we will finally begin with our ceremonial activities, and it's my understanding that we have the pleasure of having Councilman Miranda minutes today.
Honorable Chairman Tampa City Council, honorable members of Tampa City Council, my pleasure this morning to stand before you to introduce the police officer of the month, along with Chief, what's your name? Dugan? Dugan. Dugan. Dugan, and I always joke around because we go to the same barber. Officer Ryan Flanagan is an exceptional individual in the Tampa Police Department, and along with his partner, who can't be here today. The partner's name is Frank, and he's laughing because I told him a little joke earlier. And see, his real name is Pancho, but if I say Pancho, ice may come after him because he's got a Hispanic name. So I call him Frank. And so here's where we're at this morning, and this is up to the chief for the, to make the presentation of what he's done and what he hasn't done. And it's an exceptional individual, and Officer Flanagan, chief.
Morning, Council, Brian Dugan, Chief of Police. Ryan, don't worry, nobody else understands his jokes either. It's all right. I think he's just upset that Guido stole his jacket, so. See, I get to go last, that's what happens.
Well, good morning. As you can see, we have a picture of Pancho, who is the better-looking half of the K-9 unit. And so this morning, we're here for Ryan Flanagan. He is one of our K-9 units' primary trainers, and he does a phenomenal job. What's interesting about Ryan, I've known him for years, is he's not only a great cop,
he's an even better person. He really goes above and beyond. He's very passionate about being a member of the K-9 unit, and he's very instrumental in working with the other K-9 instructors and implementing some of the safest K-9 tactics. He has been involved in several major arrests, includes burglaries, auto burglaries, auto thefts, and armed robberies. He routinely responds to in-progress calls for service, where the dynamics can change very fast and often. He always takes the time to gather facts and evaluate the circumstances, and makes sound and crucial decisions without bias, making the correct decision on when to deploy his K-9 partner. You know, I stand here and I joke about K-9 being better-looking and all that stuff, but when you're a K-9 officer, it's one of the most important jobs we have in our police department. The liability of dogs, police dogs, running through neighborhoods is tremendous, and they carry a tremendous responsibility. And so it's very important that they gather the facts and make sound decisions when they're going to deploy their partner. So back in May, we were, he, Ryan was conducting a proactive patrol at the Tampa Police Department impound lot, where we had a burglary in progress. Ryan was out there. We had two suspects that were being watched via security cameras inside the fenced lot. Other officers established a perimeter. He responded to the northeast corner of the lot, and the K-9 was able to get two people to surrender. He was able to catch them behind the fence and go ahead and arrest them for that. Then in June, Brian responded to a burglary in progress, also at the impound lot. K-9 units were there, along with SAC and our community policing, and they worked a similar burglary before. The three suspects were inside the area. They fled on foot, and the perimeter units began to arrive. K-9 Pancho was deployed on a lead and made his way into a park. Pancho went in pursuit of the suspects, caught up with them as they were trying to jump a six-foot fence. Pancho engaged the first suspect on the opposite side of the, of the fence as he pushed off the flea. Pancho was unable to engage the suspect, but transitioned quickly to the second suspect who was climbing the fence. Pancho jumped and engaged this suspect, pulling him down off the fence and was able to take him into custody. And so it's these little things like that that Ryan gets involved in, that he uses his dog in a very safe manner and is able to go ahead and help us reduce crime and make Tampa a much safer city. In recognition to his dedication to outstanding work, Officer Ryan Flanagan has been selected as Officer of the Month for July of 2019.
Darla Portman with the Tampa Police Benevolent Association, Vice President Jimmy Owens, Secretary of Treasury April Larson. We are proud of Ryan immensely for everything that he does. I got the opportunity to work with him for the last 17 years in patrol. And K-9 is always one of those units that we, we love as police officers to help us out and get in the bad guys. So Ryan, super proud of you. You're also one of our board of directors, so you're in every aspect of the police department. Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's a much better photo. Good morning, Council. My name is Jeff Howke. I'm a marketing PR manager for the Columbia Restaurant Group. On behalf of the group and the five generations of family ownership for the Columbia Restaurant Group, we would like to present you with a gift card for $115, representing the 115th anniversary of the Columbia Restaurant Group. We also have a treat for Pancho. The people who make the goody-goody pies, has anybody had the pies? Okay. They made some dog biscuits.
Oh, nice.
And the ingredients, just so you know, I put them on here. Whole wheat flour, oats, beef broth, peanut butter, prosciutto, and baking powder. So here, this is for you, this is for Pancho.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Council. Jill Witecki with Tampa Theater. Thank you on behalf of Tampa's Historic Movie Palace for all that you do, and we wanted to present you with an annual membership for you and a human, unfortunately, guest. But we'd love to see you around the theater.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, buddy, I know this gentleman personally, I just want to say congratulations on behalf of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. We're here, want to give you this game ball for you, but Charlie always say not to be too cheap, so I'm throwing two tickets of your choice to go and see 2019.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Morning, Officer Ryan. Bob Knigley, I'm Dustin Portillo with Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants. We have some treats for you and for, for K-9 Pancho, and, that's for you, that's for K-9. I have a special affinity for K-9, as my brother's been, he retired from HCSO as a K-9 officer for 37 years with the district. I donated a K-9 unit, the first Rottweiler with HCSO as well. And I understand the importance of what they do for you, with you, and for all of us here in this room. Many people don't understand Many people don't understand what it's like to be on the end of a lead on a, when the dog's on a track and going through the briar, the swamps, at night with a flashlight and so forth. We understand the sacrifice and the dedication of you and that K-9, and we have all kinds of nice gifts for you that you're going to enjoy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Jim Carson, Bill Curry Ford, congratulations.
Thank you.
We see many officers, K-9 officers, come through our dealership, get in their car serviced, so this is our chance to customize a brand-new K-9 Mustang.
Ooh, very nice.
For you and Poncho.
Look at that, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Carlos Ramos with the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority, and on behalf of the Expressway Authority Officer, congratulations on your award. Here, we have a gift card to Applebee's on Gandy Boulevard, and also a dog bowl for Poncho, so he can enjoy it, too.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Oh, look at that.
Good morning, Council, Mike MacArthur, Steps Towing Service. Today, I'm joined by Mr. Todd Step, and on behalf of Steps Towing, we'd like to congratulate you, probably one of the coolest jobs on the fours. So, I'd like to present you with a $50 Bass Pro gift card, and a night out in our company limousine. Bring Poncho, I think he would enjoy it as well.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Council, Pete Rebby, Bush Gardens, Tampa Bay. As I always say every morning, that we're here doing this for the Fire Department and the Police Department, thank you for your continued support of public safety. It's an amazing, amazing act that you do, and it does not go unrecognized by the community, and most importantly, by the firemen and the police officers. And secondly, thank you for allowing us to be part of this process, it's an honor. And I just want to reiterate something that Chief Dugan said, and you know, Ryan's a great cop, he really is, he's a funny guy, too, probably tells some stories that probably get us all kicked out of here, but at the end of the day, he's a really, really great guy, and more importantly, he's an asset to the community and the department he represents. So, Ryan, thank you for what you do. On behalf of Bush Gardens and our 4,000 employees, we'd like to give you four tickets to Bush Gardens. And for Poncho, we've got an assortment of Kong accessories.
He will love it. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Mark Eni with Zoo Tampa at Lowry Park, and thank you for all you do for keeping our city safe, and we're offering you a membership for an entire year.
Thank you so much.
But we could even arrange "Bring Poncho" if we pre-arranged. You might want to play with our African hunting dogs.
That don't work out well.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, Steve Michelini, I'm here on behalf of a couple of folks, but you know, you've got to think about, did they prepare an IQ test for the guy that breaks into a police impound lot?
Bold strategy.
Bold strategy. Well, let's start with Poncho, okay? You've got more treats.
Thank you.
He's gonna, you have to work him a little extra hard because he's gonna need it. On behalf of Prestige Portraits, we're providing you with a gift certificate for you to have your portraits taken. On behalf of a new establishment for Beechy Modern Italian and Old Hyde Park Village, we're providing you with lunch or dinner, your choice, at 1633 Snow Avenue. On behalf of the Chichos Restaurant Group, we're providing you with your choice, breakfast, lunch, dinner, if any of their establishments on Howard. On behalf of Yummy House China Bistro, your choice, lunch or dinner. And on behalf, after you have all of that, you're going to have to go to the Y, because we're going to give you a gift certificate to go work out at the Y.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I saw that, saying what happened to the firefighter.
I saw that. There was more than one. I like to bring up Lorena Hardwick, who is the aide to Joe Citro, and she has something for Frank.
Good morning, Council, Legislative aide Lorena for Councilman Joseph Chicho, he regrets that he cannot be here today, but these are treats for Poncho, we really appreciate it, and we also made him a little commendation.
Very nice.
And it just says, "Heroes come in all shapes and sizes, some have two legs, some have four paws."
Very nice, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Officer Flanagan, on behalf of Tampa City Council, all the 370-some individuals in the city of Tampa, we want to say thank you for what you do, for what the police force does, 365, 24/7. And having a K-9, you work every hour of every day, of every second, because like the chief said, there's another liability that goes with it. Thank you for what you've done and what you continue to do, appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Chief?
Council, thank you for having us today, not just me, but thanks for recognizing the first responders each month, very appreciated. Chief, thank you. My entire chain of command that's here, thank you very much, so many I can't list everybody, but thank you for being here, and thank you for what you do. My sergeant and my corporal, Desiree, wrote me up for this award, very appreciative. She's a very hard worker herself and could stand in my place without a problem. And Sergeant Thiel has done amazing things since he's been in the unit, so we appreciate you all. My squad, I thank you for everything you do. Nothing that we do on K-9 especially is done alone, we can't train the dogs by ourselves, and oftentimes, we're deploying together, so none of us can do it by ourselves, so we're very appreciative of them. And my family, thank you for being here today, my daughter and my wife, and my mom and dad and my aunts. I love you, thank you. Thank you.
No, just on behalf of City Council, what Councilman Miranda said, just thank you for all your work and your sacrifices, to you as well as to all your family, your wife, your family, everybody here, just thank you for your sacrifices, because we always know that it's not just a first responder, the sacrifices, but it's his or her family, spouse, children, et cetera. So thank you, guys, and God bless you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
present the combination for firefighter of the quarter to driver engineer Mike Billick. I didn't recognize who Mike was, dressed in a uniform of the Tampa Fire Department, but about eight years ago, we met in a game called baseball, or baseball, like they said somewhere else. And look at his size and look at my size, and we had to compete against guys that were much bigger and much stronger. They did defeat the 1954 All-Stars, so the age was about the same, we were 68 to 70, they were 28 to 30. So we took on a challenge, and at the third inning, we were leading 6 to 3, but three of our starters had to leave, two that played in the 50-and-over league in the state championship game, and I had to give a political speech somewhere because it was an election year at that time. So I knew the driver engineer then, he's one hell of a pitcher, was, now he's fantastic engineer-driver for the city of Tampa, and does an outstanding job, and I'll have Chief LaCicero tell you why he was deserving the award of firefighter of the quarter. Thank you, Chief.
Good morning, Honorable Council, Honorable Chair, Nick LaCicero, City Tampa Fire Rescue. Our pleasure to be here before you today, and to introduce our firefighter of the quarter, which is driver engineer Mr. Billick, Michael Billick. And as the Councilman eloquently stated the history, Mr. Billick had a bit of an interesting story to his ultimate occupation today, which is a proud firefighter for the city of Tampa, and that was, in 2005, Mr. Billick was drafted by the Chicago Cubs as a Major League Baseball pitcher. He spent three years pursuing that goal, and after that, decided that ultimately, the desire for the fire service runs deep in his family. His grandfather was retired from FDNY, spent the 50s and the 60s working for FDNY, and ultimately, his father, Joe Billick, retired as captain with Tampa Fire Rescue after 28 years of service. So while he had the pitching prowess that some certainly saw up close, he had the desire to continue with the fire service, and he did just that. Shortly before his career started with Tampa Fire Rescue, driver engineer Billick's father, Captain Joe Billick, was diagnosed with melanoma in 2009, at the age of 49, actually. And after bravely fighting this disease, he passed away unfortunately in 2012. That same year, in memory of his father, driver engineer Billick assisted with the Captain Billick Foundation, and over the last seven years, has set out to raise money through a variety of events, and most notably, charity golf tournaments, in which, to this date, they have raised over $100,000. And all of that money raised from these events is donated to honor Captain Joe Billick and the Melanoma Research Foundation. Firefighter safety and health is very, very close to, obviously, firefighters, but especially to the Billick family, and driver engineer has, Billick has spent much time talking at the state and local levels, and a passion plea for the benefits of firefighters. And to that, he has conducted many outreaches with media and the need for the coverages as, at the state and local levels. Captain Billick Foundation has also partnered with PH Dermatology, which is a local dermatologist that provides skincare screenings to active, retired, and family members of Tampa Fire Rescue, free of charge. This potentially life-saving service is a direct result of driver engineer Billick's perseverance, devotion, and care for Tampa Fire Rescue's family. Besides being a father to his wonderful two-year-old daughter, Kaylee, who we have here, he also has volunteered over 400 hours at Eastlake High School as a pitching coach. See the problems there, so.
You.
Yeah. So, driver engineer Billick possesses the integrity, the abilities, the characteristics, and devotion to his community and the job that makes us all proud today. So for these qualities and the aforementioned direction, the safety and survival of firefighters ultimately throughout their career, we would like to recognize firefighter, driver, or driver engineer Michael Billick as the firefighter of the quarter. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council, Captain Orrin Hanson, Chairman of the Awards Review Board of Tampa Fire Rescue. And on behalf of the Awards Review Board, I would like to congratulate driver engineer Michael Billick for being selected as this quarter's firefighter of the quarter. And also, on behalf of the Marriott Tampa Waterside, a night stay for the night of our event this year, as well as a gift certificate from Texas State Brazil for a night out. Thank you for all that you've done for us and our local.
Good morning, Council, Joe Greco, President of Tampa Firefighters Local 754. We'd like to also recognize driver engineer Billick. We have some, a plaque for him, and we also have a $100 gift certificate to Bass Pro Shops. Mike's a great guy, does some great stuff off-duty. I know recently, he put together a thing where, and the chief allowed, to come into the station, the guys would come into Station One, and I believe they did one up in the north end, too, and had our, we could get a full body check for skin cancer. So that was real nice for all the guys. Anyway, thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Andrew Carter, Vice President, Tampa Firefighters.
I'm sorry, Andrew.
It's okay. I had to bring this photo up, a call that comes to mind, I've worked with Mike professionally at Truck 13, is we had a kid injured at a baseball park, and he, as he was tending to him, I was pulling up his rookie card so I could show the kid, hey, look at what you have to look for, too, you can make it to the majors. So I had that in my phone, it came up, so I figured I'd had to put it on record. Absolutely.
Council, thank you once again. Jeff Howke with the Columbia Restaurant Group, to say thank you for all you do for our community, we would like to present you with a gift card to you later, again, for $115, in representation of the 115 years of Columbia Restaurant Group. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good morning, Council, Jim Carson, Bill Curry Ford, we appreciate everything you do, keeping everybody safe, and especially with the skin cancer that's out there in our Florida sun. The Curry family and I would like to present you a brand-new Mustang.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mark Eni with Zoo Tampa, you have a two-year-old, so the zoo is going to be a great place to bring her, and here's a certificate for a free annual pass, annual membership.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again for allowing me to be here. Sir, on behalf of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, I know how hard firemen's work. I had the privilege of working with a lot of them, and all seers and rower, as I was paying my way through college, and I know quite a bit of the staff, they're just, what you guys do besides police office is just amazing. Thank you for your dedication, as I have two parents that have died of all that terrible disease, that yours did, too, so to me, that is a blessing. So, I will get this back, because the name was misspelled, but I still wanted to give you a wall and tell you congratulations. I also want to invite your entire family, whenever you want, here's my business card, to come and have a two or one buck place, and we'll have dinner or lunch on us. And when training camp officially begins on the 20th, please bring as many people as you want, we want to welcome you and honor you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, again, Council, Jill Watecki from Tampa Theater, and I have to apologize for a mix-up at the office this morning that left me a bucket and certificate short. So after the ceremony this morning, I want to meet you out in the hallway, get some good contact information that I can send you and your family an annual membership to our Historic Movie Palace.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Good morning, City Council, Dustin Portillo and Bob Knigley, on behalf of Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants. Bob and I joke, a lot of the times when we meet a lot of people in the community, that they have a heart problem. You have a heart problem, you care. You care a lot, and it affects everybody, and we appreciate what you do to serve all of us and to serve the cancer community. So on behalf of Caspers, we have a nice little goody bag that will hopefully suffice your little one over there. Hi there. Thank you so much, you well, well, well-deserved. Thank you, my friend.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, City Council, Carlos Ramos with Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority, and driver engineer, on behalf of the Expressway Authority, and as a lifelong Chicago Cubs fan, I would like to congratulate you on your award, and I would like to offer a $50 certificate to Applebee's on Gandy Boulevard.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council, Mike MacArthur and Todd Step for Steps Towing Service. Congratulations on your job well done, really looking forward to the banquet this year, good things I see coming. So, on behalf of Steps Towing, we'd like to present you with a $50 Bass Pro gift card, and a night out for you and your family in our company limousine. Enjoy it, take some time off, you deserved it.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Good morning, again, Council, Pete Rebby, Bush Gardens. I'm sure you're an incredible driver engineer, but based on the bio that the chief read, you're an incredible human being, and I think sometimes we all come here and we wait to hear stories about things that they do in service to the community in general, as responding to calls, but I think this is a call above and beyond to the greater cause of the world, and I appreciate that, I'm honored to meet you. And on behalf of Bush Gardens, I'd like to give you four tickets to Bush Gardens, anytime you'd like to come, and if your family's bigger than four, call me and I'll get you more tickets. Thank you.
Little guy. You know, I spent most summers in the Wright Bleachers of, Bleacher bum in Wrigley Field. My aunts used to take me out there, and we would only go when the Cubs played the Cardinals, because we were really Cardinal fans. So one of us always went home angry, and I wasn't quite sure if it was the uncle or the aunt, one was Cubs fan, one was Cardinals fan, but regardless, we, you know, we respect what you do, and we're grateful for all of your contributions. On behalf of the Prestige Portraits, we're providing you with a gift certificate so you can go have your pictures taken. It'll be different than your rookie card, though. On behalf of the Chichos Restaurant Group, we're providing you with a gift certificate and enjoy yourself at breakfast, lunch, or dinner. And as I said earlier, for the police officer, for Beechy Modern Italian is now open, and Old Hyde Park Village, providing you with a gift certificate, you know, we'll have lunch or dinner there. Yummy House China Bistro, lunch or dinner, and you can always go to the Y to figure out how to work all of that off. But honestly, we used to watch Ernie Banks, and Ron Santo, and some of those other early Cubs stars, but we appreciate what you do, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, thank you and thank Billick, Officer, Engineer Billick. You know, if I'd have known he was a Cubs, drafted by the Cubs, I wouldn't know if I'd be in front of him. I forgot to tell you that the starting shortstop on that '54 All-Star team was Tony La Russa, who later on became the manager of the St. Louis Cardinals. And has worked in different organizations. I think now he's helping the Boston Red Sox, and the way it looks, they need a little help. But Cubs, huh? And you were drafted?
I was.
I wasn't even drafted by the Army. But, all that aside, you're a great guy, man. I don't hold baseball against you. When I looked around, I said, "Oh, they brought their squad, they're ready to play ball." I thought they were in uniforms to play ball, then I looked, they had all the badges. I said, "No, I'm not going there." But I appreciate everything you've done. To do something that the fire men and women do, to go in when people are coming out, they ain't coming out because it's cool inside. They're coming out because there's something wrong with the building, like fire, lightning, something is going on, gas or something is going on. And the men and women of the Tampa Fire Department go in. And when I see you guys practicing that building, it's how many stories tall?
We have a four-story building and we have a two-story building that we burn in.
What about, not that burning, but the one in downtown, y'all come down?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Why don't you pick one that's 42 inches? Nobody can get hurt. I do not like heights. I do not like that, I have to admit it. Those are my weaknesses. However, officers, about you, firefighter, Michael Billick, thank you for what you've done. Thank you, and all of you, men and women of the Fire Department, continue to do on a day-to-day basis. Chief, on behalf of Tampa City Council, we're going to make this presentation together for Driver Engineer Mike Billick for being named Driver Engineer of the Quarter. Thank you for everything you've done and continue to do, you and your family. Everybody's got to sacrifice to be successful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, City Council, for giving us the opportunity to stand before you today. Thank you to Chief LaCicero and everyone that was involved in this process. And I'm honored to be nominated in a department that has over 700 men and women working for it. I'm very honored to, to be nominated as firefighter of the quarter. Very proud third-generation firefighter. My father served here, starting in 1983, for 28 years. Our, our careers overlapped by one year, and so, there's been a Billick in the Tampa Fire Service for the past 36 years, and that's something that I'm very proud of. My dad was a very selfless human being. He was the true definition of a public servant. And when he got diagnosed with cancer, he held his head high and he fought it with tenacity. And ultimately, he knew that what he was going to do and what he was, the treatments that he was going to do may not save his life, but they may, the information that they got may save someone else's life down the line. So, it was his dying wish that we continue to honor his memory and continue to fight for a cure and for the benefits of the fire service. So, this legislation that passed this year was a huge step in the right direction for the state of Florida, and I was honored to have just the tiniest little part of it. So, thank you and I appreciate everything.
And Councilman, Councilman Meniscalco would like to say something.
Well, we certainly appreciate your service and your sacrifice and your family's sacrifice and, and your father, whose name really will live on for a very, very long time with everything that you mentioned. So we're very appreciative of that. On a lighter note, is Tampa Fire like a magnet for pro-baseball players? Because I think one of the Pardo's or somebody, I don't know if he played pro-ball or what, but...
There's a bunch of us.
That's great, you know? Congratulations, you know, we thank you for all that you do.
Councilman Goots.
Well, thank you for your service and being generational. It's just a big thing for a family to strive and to continue to be a public servant. But my question to you, I heard about the ballgame. Did the legend get on base or strike anybody out?
You know, that was eight years ago and, and I got a phone call and they said, "Hey, can you get off work? We need you to come play in a baseball game." I had about a year on the job and I said, "Yeah, sure." So I got off work and I show up and they say, "We're playing against an All-Star team." I'm like, "Oh, wow." And then I started looking around and I was like, "Oh, we're playing against those guys."
Oh, whoa!
And they were out there moving around like they were 18-years-old. And Mr. Miranda had a fantastic ball club. I threw two innings, I believe, against them and for the next week, I felt like I had been hit by a Mack truck. Pretty much the last time I ever tried to do that again.
Good, good, good. Thank you.
I'm still hurting. Yeah.
And, and I want to join in and obviously say thank you for your service. It's, it's funny with, when I was a kid, in the sixth grade, I became a huge Chicago Cubs fan, 1989, when it went to the playoffs against the San Francisco Giants, and Will Clark just beat them in those playoffs. And I think the Giants went against the A's that year, if I remember. But thank you for your work, not only is it with Tampa Fire, but also, as you mentioned, with your advocacy for your father, for firefighters who are in the course and scope of employment get cancer. I know that here in Florida, the International Association of Firefighters, thanks to a lot of the men and women in this room, have done a lot of great things. Not only the, the so-called cancer bill that Governor DeSantis just signed into law, but also about a year and a half ago, the, the wage loss bill for PTSD under workers' compensation. I know in New Tampa, we're very, very proud to have the Steven Stevie Ladoo Memorial, the highway over there, and we're very proud to have that. So, the International Association of Firefighters in Florida's been doing a lot of good and, and God bless you for that. So thank you. And while folks move out, Mr. Torito, did you wish to make a comment at this time to Council, sir?
Mr. Torito?
Sal? Did, did you want to speak at this time about something? Okay, whenever, we'll wait.
Yes, sir.
I'll wait a little. Crowded.
I don't know. We'll ask.
Whoa, whoa. Almost got her. Okay, thank you. The Saltry Legal Department. Later on today, you're going to be hearing, or later this morning, you're going to be hearing from Kristen Mora, giving you a rundown on some of the new rules that have come out of the legislature dealing with quasi-judicial matters. And what I wanted to do is talk about some of the other items that are doing, that are involving that, just very briefly. One of them, when you're dealing with quasi-judicial matters, which is the, on, you see on your agenda, you'll see a section called quasi-judicial where someone is sworn in. There are provisions that we have in our city rules dealing with communications with people outside of the council chambers. You're not prohibited from meeting with someone on a quasi-judicial matter, but if you do, before that matter comes up, what you must do is you must announce that you have talked to someone, you must give the name of the person you talked to, and you must also decide what it is you discussed. That's a requirement that we have in the city. It's not prohibited to do it, but since it's not being done in these chambers, you must put it forward and let everyone know what was happening on that. The other item I want to deal with is something that comes up from time to time, dealing with how the city council's role and the mayor's role fit, because you know, you get a lot of items that'll be coming up today dealing with contracts that come before you. And under our rules here and in our charter provisions, those are items that you have the final say on. These are things that you can say yes or no on. You may ask any question you need, you may ask for any information you need to make your decision. What you can't do is go beyond that. Unfortunately, from your perspective, what the charter says is that you have a right to say yes or no. Okay? You cannot renegotiate that. The negotiation is done by the administration. That doesn't diminish your role because you can say why you're saying no. And if you can get the regular votes from three more of your members, then that item will go down and then the administration has to make a decision if they want to make the changes that you're having. But you do not have, under our charter provisions, the right to renegotiate those contracts, even though you may ask any question you need to ask, any get information you need to ask, and then your decision becomes final. Part of the reason for that is you have seven members here and you deal, you operate collegially. And if you have one member trying to change something, that should be coming before you here, and the way you change it is you vote no. And then the administration has to make a determination of whether they want to bring that item back with the changes you've made. That doesn't diminish your role in any way because you're the ones that have the final say on whether any of our agreements are approved. But it's just a matter of renegotiating, which our charter does not allow that. That leaves that directly for the administration.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
Attorney, Torito, I appreciate what you're saying and having been here for a while, I generally agree with what you're saying. However, sometimes we are in tight timetables in terms of contracts and that sort of thing. Sometimes I don't think it's in the best interest of the city for us to just vote yes or no, and then the administration might have to come back two weeks later or a month later on something that we've been told is, is urgent. And a lot of the items we deal with are urgent. So, on occasion, I've been part of, of a process where we say, "You know, we could approve, or I could vote for this particular contract if this little language was changed." So maybe we defer it until later in the, in the agenda for the administration to review that, perhaps call the vendor, make sure they're okay with it, they tweak that item up, and they bring it back later in the agenda and everybody's happy and we don't have to turn it down. So, even though I hear the general intent of what you're saying, I would agree with. I think sometimes there are circumstances where we could make constructive suggestions, either before the meeting, while we're reviewing it, or even at the meeting, and see if the, if the staff feels that it's important enough to address, you know, during that meeting time. It's just, it's, it's happened before, it works sometimes. I don't think it's outside of our purview to, you know, to make constructive suggestions. There's a lot of, of good brain power up here that, that can be very helpful to the administration sometimes. That's my point, but no response required.
The only caveat that I have, and it's not really a caveat, is if it was done through a bidding process, then sometimes you can't make the change, even if you want the administration to make that change, if it has a, a major change to the agreement because other people bid based on those parameters.
I agree with that.
If the parameters change, that doesn't mean you can't ask, that doesn't mean the administration can't consider it, but it's possible that you may not get your answer that day. And that's an unfortunate way that our charter works.
I agree with that. A lot of times, you're right, it's a tight bid. I used to be a bidding officer, I agree with that. But then sometimes these things are negotiated a little looser and not part of a strict bidding process. But anyway, thank you, sir.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we move to public comment. If anyone here wishes to comment on any item on the agenda, please come forward for three minutes at a time. Now, it's very important that on matters which are quasi-judicial, you may comment before those particular items. However, if you wish to comment on any of the items that we will be dealing with under staff reports, now is your time to comment. You may not comment as a general rule under staff reports, but it must be now. Three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Morning, Menznot. You know, when they dumped the tea out in Boston Harbor, they say those white folks were heroes. They say it was taxation without representation and some other things that was going on. And when them black Jets went over to that impound lot and tried to get some of our property back that the Tampa Police Department steals every single day, under the auspices that we're committing crime because we driving too fast or got $5 worth of marijuana in the car, some more white people smoked than anybody else. They heroes too, they heroes in eyes. And come and holler at me, I dropped something off in your account. Plain and simple, just like that. Who's going to try to break in the impound lot? You might have 10 vehicles over there that's really committed or associated to crime, and you've got thousands of bicycles over there that you took out the resources, taking all the resources out of the African community. And you speak on it, 600,000 bicycle stops, you speak on it here, and nothing gets done because you know why? This city council is a do-nothing city council, just like the previous city councils. Y'all don't do one damn thing for the people, nothing. Absolutely, positively, nothing. No respect, no nothing. Y'all got a hatred, y'all use the N-word in a smart way, smile with black people like y'all care for us and y'all don't give a damn about us. Nothing. Look in our communities and what you see, nothing. Y'all think it's trick-or-treating Halloween every single day of the year for black people. Y'all think y'all can fool us and trick us every single day of the year. If it's Amendment Four, if it's the 60, 1964 Voting Rights Bill, if it's affirmative action, that's something that all white women get now, that they building garages over in Y-Boy City with HUD money. Y'all think y'all can trick and fool black people. Y'all think we just that stupid. Y'all don't care about us. And the police officer, the police officer that told the black woman, "He's going to bankrupt her because she want to file a report." He's going to bankrupt her because she was physically assaulted. That's how they insult African people. It's ongoing. When my wife was physically attacked right there in Kennedy Boulevard in front of a major university, University of Tampa, 20 seconds away from the police department, nothing was done. And you hear this is prevalent inside the African community. Black women getting attacked and white police officers threatening them, telling them they can't file a report. It's trick-or-treat Halloween for African people 24/7. And it's a do-nothing city council. When you come to them with something, they tell you, "Oh, you got to see the mayor, ain't nothing they can do about it." It's absolutely, positively do-nothing garbage city council. Every last one of y'all. Plain and simple.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Thank you. And I'm also Irish, too. All right.
Please, no comments from the crowd. Thank you.
Good morning, Tampa Council. My name is Diana Klein. I'm here on behalf of our preborn neighbors who are being murdered every week in Tampa under your watch and jurisdiction. I gave a, a diagram for each one of you to look at that, that shows how the babies are murdered in Tampa. And I want to show you here, I have a photograph from the last time that I was out in front of the murder mill on Kennedy Boulevard. This is a young girl, the one in the middle, who I believe is being sex trafficked. She came out of the back door after the killer killed her baby. The woman who's on the left was an assistant to the person who was driving the vehicle to get away after the murder. And I'm going to report this photograph because I do believe this is a young girl that is being sex trafficked here in Tampa. There's no telling where she, she lives, where she came from, but it needs to be known in our community that, that abortion protects the rapist. Abortion is murder in the womb that is protecting men who are raping these girls. You have a God-ordained duty to preserve justice and to punish this evil. Roe v. Wade is not a law, it's a fundamentally flawed court opinion that is to be completely ignored. You need to learn how to interpose for these preborn children by learning about the doctrine of the lesser magistrates at DefyTyrants.com. God's word tells us that when the sentence against an evil deed is not executed speedily, the heart of the children of man is fully set to do evil. That's in Ecclesiastes 8:11. This is what's happened in Tampa and across the nation. One in four women have a heart fully set to murder their little son or daughter in the womb. We need to change this vicious cycle. Children are a gift from God and need to be loved, nurtured, and protected in the womb. Love begins in the womb. I welcome each of you to come out and join me to see this atrocity for yourself, to see how these women are being trafficked and other women who are going in to gleefully kill their children. There is plenty of help for women who are with child in Tampa, lots of resources for women. And you can find out more about what I do as a missionary for the preborn at LovethePreborn.com. That's LovethePreborn.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity for public comment. My name is Deena Levin Good. I live in the city of Tampa and I'm here representing the legal women voters of Hillsborough County. And I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service. And I very much appreciate that item number 45 has been pulled from the agenda today. It's difficult as, as a member of the public who sees an item on an agenda, who wishes to speak to it, to sometimes address having it pulled at the last moment because I have prepared comments and would love to read the letter that I sent to you last evening to all of you as the city council members about the Tampa Augmentation Project. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about how wonderful... prepared comments, and would love to read the letter that I sent to you last evening, to all of you as the city council members, about the Tampa Augmentation Project. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about how wonderful it is that you now have scheduled a workshop to actually talk about other alternative water sources, and request that you take in mind that public notice of the actions that you're taking, the discussions that you're having about alternative water sources, are really important to the public. And if we are not involved in these discussions and studies, as you're moving them forward, and don't understand the logic or reasoning behind selecting one particular project over another, it doesn't benefit our community or anyone else. And so, I really appreciate that you're doing the workshop before the vote about the funding. Thank you for your service to the city for doing that, and to us. I would like to point out that the League did submit a letter to you, with attached letters that we've also submitted to Tampa Bay Water, outlining our concerns about the Tampa Augmentation Project. The League is not opposed at all to looking at reclaimed water as a potential water source in the future. We know that we're going to have to look at potential sources elsewhere. However, we are concerned about how this particular project has moved forward since its beginning, and there has been no transparency or public process along the way. This has been really difficult for the community, and consequently, at this time, we could not support this project. We do ask that any consideration of any alternative water project be transparent and public. We ask that it meets all scientific and industry best practices, uses the most modern and available technology, that it considers public health and public safety, that there's an effective and objective comparison and cost-benefit analysis and feasibility study done, and we need to study how any decisions that you as a city council might make on this will affect Tampa Bay Water, and its ability to operate, so that we no longer have water wars in our region. So I hope that you will take all of those into consideration, and all the items listed in our letters to heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Barb Tepeke. I live on Branch Avenue in Tampa. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, who sent us an email notifying us about today. I'm also a member of the Sierra Club, where I first heard about the Toilet-to-Tap Project, from a flyer that they gave us. "The Tampa Augmentation Project proposes to take treated sewage treatment plant output, and insert it into the aquifer with minimal treatment and no quality monitoring plan. It will then be extracted and mixed with our drinking water. There are currently no standards for potable water." So Sierra Club, at the time, had asked us to contact the Tampa Bay Water Board in April, and asked them to wait for the Potable Reuse Commission to develop safe drinking water standards. Because once contaminated water is in our aquifer, it will be difficult and costly to clean up. I believe the Tampa Bay Water Board postponed discussion for one year, to wait for research and standards. Please work with the Tampa Bay Water Board, and do not pursue this project on your own. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good morning, Council. Susan Johnson Velez. I'm here to speak on item number forty-four this morning. It is a public hearing on a petition for review, but you can't hear it this morning because of a notice issue. So, you're being asked in this agenda item to reschedule it to September nineteenth, and I'd like to ask that, or propose an alternate date, because my client is not available to attend the September nineteenth date, so I'd ask for council to reschedule it for October third, twenty nineteen.
Can I get a motion to reschedule? And before, before we do that, how does that look? That date okay? Everything okay?
I'm gonna make a motion to reschedule this item, file number E twenty nineteen-eight, to October third, for ten thirty a.m., under public hearing.
Second? Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Iskaku, a second by Councilwoman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
My name is Pastor Frank Williams, Paradise, Mississippi, Mary Patrick Church, eleven-twelve East Scott Street. I've been coming down here, day after day, year after year, month after month, everything else, and we never get nothing done. I don't see why this city council even exist. It shouldn't even exist, because y'all don't represent black folk. Just like Tony, just while ago, said, you don't. You don't care nothing about us. And I got to read some script to y'all, so y'all can understand that we are still human beings, just like anybody else, whether you think so or not. During the slavery day, they say we was only one-fifth of a human being. I don't know where they got that foolishness from. I think that we are more human beings than some of y'all are. Have mercy, Jesus. I'm gonna read the hundred and twenty-seventh division of Psalm. I know some of you don't want to hear it, but I'm gonna read it, because that's what God put in my heart to do. Hundred and twenty-first. "I will lift up my eyes unto the hills, from whence cometh my help. My help cometh from the Lord, which made the heaven and the earth. He will not suffer my thy foot to be moved. He that keepeth thee will not slumber. Behold, he that keepeth ills, shall neither slumber nor sleep. The Lord is my keeper. The Lord is thy shade upon thy right hand. The sun will not smite thee by day, nor the moon by night. The Lord shall preserve thee from all evil. He shall preserve thy soul. The Lord shall preserve thy going out, and thy coming in, this time forth, and forevermore." And the reason I read that script to y'all, and I pray to God that y'all will understand it, if you don't understand it, how I'm handling it, get your own Bible and read it just for yourself. You know, God is our keeper. Y'all don't keep us, y'all don't even watch over us, y'all don't care nothing about us. But the Lord God Almighty care everything about us. And we have to thank people like Tony Daniel, myself, and some other black folk, but the people that need to be here, don't even come out here. We're at the NAACP, that's supposed to represent black folk. They don't even exist. I think I'd rather call the KKK to come down here and call the NAACP, because they don't do nothing for nobody. Only thing they want to do is have banquets. And I'm being honest with you, and look at what they're doing to the poor Mexican children, killing them, and ain't nobody doing nothing about it. The newspapers won't even write the true stories about them. They won't show the truth on TV about the poor Mexican. And them Mexicans ain't doing nobody no harm, they're just trying to survive, just like anybody else. And we ought to be glad to have people that trying to survive, if we got it, to help them. And God made this a rich land, but we tearing it apart. And if we don't get that, what is his name? President Trump, that's what y'all calling the president. But he don't act like a president, he act like an infant there. And we need to get him out of there. If we don't get him out of there, y'all gonna be sorry.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Go Trump.
Say what?
And please, no further outbursts from the audience, if...
You give me three minutes to make comments, and that's what my comments are.
I wasn't talking to you, sir. No further outbursts from the audience, please. Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Alexandra Metcalf, and it's a pleasure to come before you this morning to talk about an important topic to me, and I think an important topic to a lot of people, that's transportation, and that is the possible creation of the Citizens Traffic Advisory Committee. I'd like to offer my support for this committee. I support the idea, because I believe in the community's ability to work together, to solve, to find solutions for our shared community problems regarding transportation. In addition, as a former federal bureaucrat, I've seen firsthand both the importance of and the success of public participation in policymaking, and I will always strongly support any effort to provide a real avenue for citizens to work together with their elected officials and policymakers on issues of importance. To that end, I would strongly encourage you to ensure, to the very best of your abilities, that this committee be representative of all of Tampa. And for me, the importance is the disability committee, the disabled community. It's important that the views are present and accounted for, because too often, the disabled community is overlooked when it comes to transportation, which is a shame, given the inherent challenges that we all face. The fact of the matter is, those of us with disabilities drive. We ride the bus, we use ride-sharing services, we ride paratransit, some of us even ride the trolley from time to time. As you're thinking about the community-wide transportation challenges that we all face, and as you're considering your policy options, I know I would feel better as a citizen, if I knew the committee included a voice familiar with the disabled community, to advocate for solutions that take into account our unique needs. Again, thank you for your time, Council, and I wish you the best of luck with the morning's meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Alex. And I wanted to introduce, to all who are here in council today, my friend Alex Tuis. I happened to meet Alex through his brother Brett, who's a friend of mine and a colleague, and a darn-good lawyer, if you're ever in any criminal troubles. But I came across Alex when we had discussed the issue of having a Citizens Transportation Committee, and I had suggested having a seat that's dedicated to people with disabilities in to that community. And I personally think if that is created, that our individual for that seat was this gentleman right here. Thank you, Alex. We really appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Next, ma'am.
My name is Norine Copeland Miller, and I'm here because I am extremely concerned about environmental issues that's going on. I live in East Tampa, and I have a question, and I needed to ask you all about the demolition process that you have. Hopefully, you have something in place at city council, but I don't know what I'm here to talk about, because I witnessed a building being demolished last week on Twenty-first and Mallory, and it was a structure that was built before nineteen seventy-eight, lead base, all of those different things, but the community was never notified that that was happening. People woke up, getting ready to go to work, hearing all this loud noise, dust all in the air. They are the daycare center within two blocks away, where kids were there. And I've made a list of the different things that I'm concerned about, because I want to know if there are any regulations in place, if you're going to notify the community about demolition in there. Did you include, do they include a notification to the residents, notify any businesses, childcare centers in the area? It was a lot of hazardous dust in the air. They use regular garden hose to water down the debris. So I'm wondering, does the city have any oversight in there? Who's involved with the water? Is code enforcement there? What's going on? The city monitor these locks? Workers were not protected, noted they did not have on masks or anything. They were standing on the debris. So if they were not worried about their own public safety, certainly, the residents were not notified. But I need to know, have you all, do you follow the lead, dust in the air regulations? I brought also some information about demolition and asbestos renovation guidance, and do you all have those developers doing any kind of application notifying how to do public safety? Because I don't know if the city has the responsibility, but I do know that there was no water meter, and one of the things, it was electrical live wire in one of the residence backyard. There was no oversight. And the gentleman said to me that they were beautifying the community. And I said, who's dispensed? Because you're killing the community. And the people were breathing, the dust was in the air, I was very concerned about it. I called my councilman, because it was apparent to me that these people, people are coming into the community, doing whatever they want to, with no regard or respect for the community.
Councilman Good.
And I brought some handouts, and I didn't want you all to try to remember what I said, but I brought my concerns, if someone would give them. Okay. And lead gets into little kids through the dust in the air, lead get into our body. We buy air-conditioned filters for our air conditioners.
Ms. Copeland, let me speak to it. Gentlemen, I received a call from Ms. Copeland, community activist, serves on several boards in the city. Also, I had a call from the lady from the Health Department, over pollution, environmental concerns, and other citizens. I responded to the situation, and what I saw was a travesty. When I pulled up my vehicle, I saw workers working unprotected, with no safety gear, no mask. We're talking about heavy equipment, no road closure, or lane block with the traffic that's coming on a main thoroughfare. It was a sight, the stench in the air, the dust, and this is day two that I responded to, not day one. So I can imagine what day one was like. I've got a daycare center to the immediate west of it, new homes are being built on that street, the closest fire hydrant, maybe a block, two blocks, I mean, two blocks away. I had some very serious concerns. And I did talk to the superintendent of the project. He came up later, and it was like, what's that, we didn't care, it's like, we didn't know what to do, we didn't know who to call, we, there's no hydrant here, we're doing the best we can, water hoses, very, very disturbed in my community, especially what got me, when I can look at the debris in the air, and I can smell it, and I've got children, and most kids probably have asthmatic situations and symptoms in the area. So for citizens to call my office and demand that I come down there, from a meeting, which I do, my constituents asked me to, I left my meeting to come see and witness, and they were truthful about what they were saying. So, Mr. Chairman, I know we do motion in here, but I need to make a motion at this time, in reference to the situation, sir.
I'll let it happen.
Within the last week, I recently witnessed two demolitions in a residential area that posed a serious health and safety and environmental issues. Consequently, I would like to make a motion for Construction Services Division and Legal Department to craft a staff report by August one, regarding permitting and site inspection procedures for demolition sites, as it applies to both private and city contractors. I would like the report to specifically address how and when surrounding cities, citizens are notified of demolitions in the area, how the city ensures the usage of proper safety equipment, such as masks, goggles, and hard hats, also, and how the city ensures adequate water accessibility and usage at a demolition site. A lot of major concerns we need to look into. I was very disturbed, and I'm looking for a second, if I can get it.
Okay, and for August first, will they be, have you talked with them about this?
I'm not talking about that, I'm looking at the next council date, I think two weeks should be enough time to get that.
Okay, just making sure, just making sure. Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Good, we have a second by Councilwoman Carlson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
And I do want to say, to add insult to injury, they loaded the dump trucks and rolled through the community uncovered, with all of the dust spreading through the community.
Thank you very much for your time here today, ma'am. Next, please.
Ma'am, if I could get your, excuse me.
Oh, ma'am.
Ms. Norine? Ms. Norine? Was he watching?
Your papers that you wanted to...
I'll give it to him. Thank you. And here now, you can take all of it. Yeah, all of it. All of this? Yeah, that's information, educational information.
Okay, next, please.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Verleen Drayton. I'm here on behalf of Affordable Housing. I want to present this information. I'm living in affordable housing right now. HUD, these names are the people who are supporting and knowing, property organization I'm living in right now. This is the type of living they're putting me to live in, raw sewage. I'm currently living in that right now. The reason why I wear the mask, because of those conditions right there. This is what the kitchen look like right now. I can't go in there and cook because of the smell. They said there's a shadow in the kitchen, I don't understand where the shadow come from. And then last but not least, I forgot when this was published, but it must be true. Decent housing for poor is proving to be costly to build. I want to know why we can't get affordable housing for people who do not have a working job. I'm disabled, I'm a former military spouse. I've been wearing the mask since I been in these affordable housing. I returned here in twenty thirteen, and today, I'm still asking, why can't I get affordable housing without Molder Mildew? I've been getting up for the last two weeks, leaving the apartment at five o'clock in the morning, because I can't cook in the kitchen, I can't stand the smell of the sewage running through the pipes. I asked for ventilation for the, air-condition vent for the apartment, July tenth. I stand here today, again, this statement must be true, I have not gotten that air-condition filter. If I didn't have to make all these copies, maybe I can afford an air-conditioned filter. But I need to come down here and let you all know. I keep inviting you to come to my place, come to my place. You can smell what I smell, don't eat what I eat, just come sleep where I sleep. I need you to come see this. I need you to come see this. I've had enough. My money is only a fixed income. I want better. I want to do better. But because of this true statement here today, it prevents me. How do you get up in the morning and go to work when you smell sewage? How do you function during the day when you know you go back to sewage? I want to know why. The air is not quality life. I don't know where this come from. Folks up north trying to figure out why every apartment that you been in, there's these problems. Why is these problems existing in these affordable houses? These nonprofit organizations getting money from somebody here in Hillsborough County, and they making these living conditions unbearable. I can't do it. Who want to come and stay? And here's a list of the people that are supporting these nonprofit organizations. Please come out and find out who is getting the money and what they doing with it. That's all I got to say, people. I appreciate it. Y'all enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Miranda.
Excuse me, ma'am.
And ma'am, ma'am?
I, we can't do anything. Where is it, where's the, what is your residence address? Where do you live at?
Right now, currently, I'm living in...
The house that you showed us?
Excuse me?
The one that you showed us on the picture? Where's that located?
Right now, on the picture, it is the one I'm residing in.
I believe you. Where's the address?
1915.
1915.
East 131st Street. And that is the Arbor Apartments, Volunteers of America is the nonprofit organization in HUD housing.
HUD?
HUD housing.
HUD inspects every year, don't, do they not? They're supposed to.
I just sent out an email, and they asked me, and I've been in the apartment since April of 2019, and I sent out an email, I think, day before yesterday, and they asked if I want to have an inspection. So, I don't know if housing's supposed to be during this inspection. I don't know if VOA's supposed to be. Now, VOA came out and did an inspection. They checked for the fire extinguisher. They checked for the smoke detector. And they checked for the leaks under the sink in the kitchen. At that time, that's not leaking. It's not smelling.
I would imagine this is in the city Harbor Apartments in 1915 East 131st Street.
It's Arbor Fletcher? It's county.
It's county? All right, that's in the county. But I'm going to have our code enforcement get with the code enforcement of the county and have them do the inspection and report back. Unfortunately, this is the council chambers. We only go to the district of the city, the population within the city boundaries. But if it's in the other side of the county line, the line is not going to make a difference to me or anyone in the audience. We're going to try to help you, and we'll find out what the code enforcement says. If you leave your name and phone number, all the particulars here in the front desk, I'll see that get addressed, okay?
I thank you very much. Code enforcement has been to the apartment that I'm currently in. And one time, I just recently asked them to give me an update on the information. I have not heard back from them yet. So I'm diligent on this also.
Thank you very much. Leave your information. We'll be contacted.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Good morning, Connie Burton, a proud member in AAACP. You know, when the officers are here this morning, my reflection immediately went to the fact that five years, the family of Eric Gardner have been asking for justice in the vicious murder, the strangulation that the whole world witnessed. And although that's a New York issue, it has a home feel for me because just recently, here in the city of Tampa, where the chief had to fire three officers, vacate 17 cases with 225 cases still remaining. I would love for the chief to come here to tell this community how we can build trust again. How do we build trust? How do we tell our children? Because I instruct all my grandchildren, unless you have legal counsel, don't talk to the police. It's not safe to do so. That's number one. Number two, the Affordable Housing Alleged Workshop that we had last, I mean, June. I'm concerned. I went and pulled the transcript of Ms. Vanessa McCleary, and something that she said while she was at the podium, I want to have further clarification from this council. When she stated that she do not want concentrated poverty, and we don't want a concentrated affordable housing. What do that mean? What do that mean when we need affordable, working-class housing in communities where people are making minimum wage income but still need somewhere to stay? When we are people that's living in hotels right now, paying up to $60 a day? And we have the city head of the department manager for the city of Tampa saying she don't want a concentration of affordable housing? We was clear that in East Tampa, we do want affordable housing. Housing that's going to benefit residents that can afford them, not this new imaginary affordable housing priceline of $200,000 homes and more. I had asked you, of course, I know this is not the CRA, but you're the same body, because 26 lots have gone out. They're going to be vetted on by next week, but you know what? Councilman Goode knows this better than any of you all. We still don't have a strategic plan in East Tampa. We're working off the 2009. 10 years later, people are doing what they want to do. We're getting roundabouts while we got people with tacks on their homes, getting ready for hurricane season. And lastly, this is what we get at our Affordable Housing Workshop as updates.
Thank you very much.
Something to talk about Christmas, and we're inmate.
Thank you, ma'am, and Councilman Goode.
Ms. Burton.
Yes, sir.
Two things you pointed out. Later on during council, what we asking for continues because I'm still waiting for the administration with them on a date that council is coming to the citizens of the east side of town for housing. So that is in the works still. I'm just waiting, dealing with the administration because I don't control the administration and their employees. So I'm waiting on that. Once I get that, I will come back with a date for council to approve that we will go to the community. So that is still a hot topic for me, that's number one. As relates to the CRA, you are correct. I did get a brief information that the RFP was put out for the strategic plan. I don't know the exact date. I'll deal with that at the CRA board, uh, board next week, and then we can get those answers out to the community public when that strategic plan is going to be up here. So you are correct in that, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Carlson?
Also, I met with the Planning Commission yesterday. So the Planning Commission, the MPO from the All for Transportation money is going to get 1%. And I think the county voted to reinstate that yesterday. And so with that planning money, I specifically talked, I know several others have about, or I think several others have, about proposing doing master plans for different areas of Tampa, but East Tampa in particular. I just took another tour the other day, and, you know, there are lots of ideas, but we need to build a consensus around the ideas to try to develop that further.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good morning. My name is Topher Morrison. I'm a resident of Tampa, and I also have a business in downtown as well. And before I speak about my open topic, I just want to say congratulations, and I'm very optimistic looking at this city council. Had the opportunity to get to know all of you during the campaign, and I'm excited for our city based upon who I see up here. So thank you guys for what you guys do. Also, a few weeks back, as I was coming to work, I noticed that the trees, the oak trees were being chopped down on Jackson, on Kennedy, and then also on Morgan Street. Thank you, Commissioner Carlson, for sending your aide to help me out with that. I finally got to the bottom of that, and the reason why most of you didn't know what was going on was because it was approved many, many years ago, and it's just finally starting to get into place. I'm here to ask for your help and to offer mine. I'm not opposed or upset that the oak trees were chopped down. I understand that the sidewalks are in disrepair, and all of that needs to be rebuilt. The frustrating part for me right now is that the builders plan to replace those oak trees with palm trees. And the reason I have a problem or a challenge with that is because palm trees don't do anything for creating shade, which discourages walkability. If there's one phrase I would like you guys to remember, it is that walkability equals profitability for a city. The more walkable of a city we have, the greater people will walk. The more they walk, the more they spend, the higher the property values increase. It creates a much better environment. In speaking with the architect of that bill, he said that the challenge really boils down to what the CRA has approved for acceptable trees. And this is, I'm just reporting what I've heard. There's a tree matrix which only allows palm trees and crepe myrtles to be planted in the downtown area. So what I would like to ask is, is it possible that we could get a greater selection of trees, perhaps olive trees as well, like they're using in Ebor City, to be planted in the downtown area? Ones that are vertical roots and growth, but also provide more shade than a palm tree. Their logic behind that is they're trying to brand Tampa as a tropical place for people to visit, and I get that. Fine, let's have our Instagram-worthy palm trees in beautiful places, but the majority of the places, let's have some really cool shade trees that don't damage the sidewalks. And while I'm asking for your wisdom, I'm offering you my legs. I'm blessed that I have time. I will work as hard as I can for you guys to do whatever's necessary, to do the research, to find the right trees. And I'm proposing that to you now and asking if we could get, when you put on your CRA hats, more selection for trees.
Councilman Dingfelter?
Thank you, Mr. Morrison, and thank you for your efforts in running for office and your public service in many, many ways. I've been receiving quite a few emails about the trees that were removed. And after doing the research, you know, the staff responds and said they needed to remove them. They're going to replace them, blah, blah, blah. I didn't realize that we had a limitation in terms of palms and crepe myrtles, in terms of what can come back. I agree with you completely. So with that said, I'd like a motion for a staff report to come back in August to discuss the tree matrix, the limitations on replacement in the downtown area and any other relevant urban, urban or urbanizing area, and to look at some alternatives. And that would be... August 22nd. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco.
Okay, we have a motion by, any discussion? I'm sorry, what, sir?
Discussion.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Morrison, thank you for what you do. You're out there every day I see, and I hope you're okay with the incident that happened downtown.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine. Takes more than hot sauce to keep me down.
Councilman Dingfelter, you're right, but I wish you can amend that a little bit because I've had several calls about trees in my district, especially in the east side. Trees that are going into the power lines, the cable lines, all these lines, but no one wants to take responsibility when residents are calling saying, "We need the trees cut because they're going into the lungs." So I don't know if there is a board for trees or whoever, but I believe we need to, you could amend and have staff give, I'll be on who's responsible and how the citizens get responsive, corrective action for these trees that are growing all over into the streets and hanging with the power lines, cable lines, and et cetera.
I'll totally accept that as a friendly amendment to, as a sort of a second, a second item for discussion with staff. And it's kind of funny, there's a tension in our community because some people, some people want to do that and trim the trees, and other people want to totally save the trees and say that TICO butchers the trees, which is a little bit true, too. And TICO representatives are here today, but I don't think they're here to discuss that. But anyway, yes, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment of Mr. Maniscalco.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelter, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, can I, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Topher, we can talk later and with my legislative aide, Jason, but many of you know I lived in Singapore five years. I was just there with my son. And Singapore back in 1965, the original prime minister set a whole strategy to create a tree canopy. And the idea was to bring the temperature of the city down by at least 10 degrees and make the, make the place cooler and more pedestrian-friendly. And imagine, any of you who haven't been there, imagine driving down 275, and there's shade on 275 because of the tree canopy. And that's how strategic it was. We have, you know, I sat through the tree presentation of the city last year, and we have the best, or one of the best tree canopies in the world. But besides just looking at where the trees are and what kinds of trees we use, I think at some point, we need to look at, how do we create a canopy for pedestrians and for roadways? And that's a separate discussion, but I look forward to talking to you or whoever else is watching who would like to be a part of that so that we can make this a more livable and green community.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good morning, council members. My name is Harold Holder. I'm with the Bush Ross Law Firm. I represent John and Patricia Maul. And I'd like to raise a brief procedural matter before the Mauls have an opportunity to make their public comments. The Mauls have owned their property at 4104 Lynn Avenue in Seminole Heights since 1981. That's their homestead property. It's been in their family since 1908. We're here today about Agenda Item 50 and mitigation credit to which the Mauls are entitled. We're prepared to make comments now, but if the council prefer, we could wait until the item is called and...
It's, this is your time.
Okay. So, the, at the council's June 6 meeting, the council directed the city attorney to provide a report regarding the Mauls mitigation credit during today's hearing. They provided a memorandum, and where we've left off to briefly summarize is that the Mauls, without providing a professional engineering-signed survey, will, the city will no longer work with the Mauls about their mitigation credit issue. And the Mauls' house is built on a slab. Mr. Maul harvests the rainwater from his roof. He does not discharge any rainwater to the city systems. And he attended a Seminole Heights Civic Association meeting where he was told to build a berm around his property to further establish that he would be qualified for the credit. He did so. He's entitled to the mitigation credit. If he's not entitled to the mitigation credit, he's entitled to an explanation of what he needs to do to qualify. And the, there's no requirement of a professional engineering survey under the city ordinance for a residential homeowner to qualify for the mitigation credit. That's only a commercial parcel requirement. And so the Mauls would like, are here today to prove their case to the city council, and Mr. Maul will make some public comments. But we would request that the city council direct the city attorney's office to continue working with the Mauls without requiring a professional engineering survey, which is not required under the city ordinance. And I'd now like to introduce Mr. Maul to make his public comments.
Okay, and Councilman Miranda?
No, I think, this, I'm in 50, and I see Assistant, Senior Assistant Attorney Jan McLean, which is in the audience, and he talks about this case. I don't know if you want to hear it now or later.
Yeah.
We're happy to address it then or now, whichever the council prefers.
And beforehand, okay, I mean, if they want to speak, I mean, this is under, this is their time to speak. It's under staff report, so if they wish to, they have three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Well, and strike that, under item number 50, Jan, are, Jan? Under item number 50, it says to meet with these individuals. Are you to meet with them as part of the item? Are they to speak jointly with you as part of the item, or is it just solely you up there for 50, for number 50?
For number 50 is a request that Councilman Dingfelter made of me to, a request to meet with the Mauls and then report back here. I have submitted a memorandum in lieu of appearance, and...
Okay, so their participation is not necessary for number 50, correct? I would think not, but I'm...
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is John Maul. I'm a water harvesting homesteader that lives in an old farmhouse built in 1908 in Seminole Heights. I've been harvesting rainwater there since 1981, when I moved there as a homesteader. I have engaged an attorney, Boris Ross, to help me with the mitigation. But I wanted to say, this is what my attorney says, that the Mauls are entitled to 100% mitigation credit. And you got a packet, I believe, from Jan McLean, which explains this position. But they have a different position, and they say, "I think that you're not going to get a 100% mitigation credit, no matter what you do." So perhaps like I was told last time I was here, I'm just chasing my tail. I mean, and spending money that to no avail. But I was here, and I didn't know you were talking about water sources for drinking, but harvesting rainwater, I'd like to put this here and to show you that when I harvest rainwater, my July 0, June 0, May, April, May, you can zero out how much water you need to buy from whoever the city because you are harvesting rainwater. And you can also not flood the roads so that you have to remove it so the cars can drive down it. I think if more people were involved, actually, you can go to the extension service, and the city pays for that, which I did, to learn how to harvest rainwater. I've been very successful with it. If you go by my place, you'll see the plants thrive better without all the chlorine or whatever they put in it. And so I suggest that maybe you kind of help people who are harvesting rainwater rather than changing, charging them. There are some communities that I'm aware of that you can get a federal grant for 20, up to $25,000 if you reduce the runoff. But that doesn't seem to have... to apply here. Here, they just charge them. So I guess this is by three minutes. We were hoping to make more of a presentation, because we have the packet, has some graphs in there that I... I'm got a math education degree from Florida State, but I can't understand the graph that's in there. Maybe Jan could help explain just exactly what that means. The X and Y axes don't have anything by them to even explain what they're representing. So that's, hopefully, we can somehow resolve this. Give me 100% mitigation credit.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. And Councilman Dingfelder would like to speak.
Yes. I'm not going to get in... Legal staff has advised me, you know, the potential for litigation on this, and so I'm not going to necessarily get in the individual issue out of respect to our legal advice. However, earlier in our meeting, we honored police and firemen for heroic actions and honorable community service. And I think we should have some type of awards for our citizens who do honorable things in the name of our community. And I think Mr. Mall is a classic example. You know, we have two big problems in our city that we spend hundreds of millions of dollars on. One is stormwater, okay? And he's doing his best to retain stormwater on his property. And it's not about the $266 stormwater bill that's on his bill. It's about the principle that he's trying to keep the stormwater on his property. And he's running in circles with our staff in terms of doing that. And then secondarily, in terms of his water usage. Later in this meeting, August 29th, we're going to discuss $350 million to go out and find additional sources of water. And here he is, collecting his water, and we see his water usage for six months of the year is zero. So this is a community hero, in my opinion. Anyway, with that said, I'll discuss item 50 when we get to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Chairman, Miranda?
I'm just going to speak, so I don't get misunderstood later on in the future, many years to come, or months to come, or weeks to come, or days to come. I don't want an award. Mine is all zeros for 11 months. I'm not here for an award. I don't want an award. I don't have any grass. I put rocks 20 years ago when this first started. That don't mean I, or Mr. Mall, or anybody else is looking for an award. That's the way you set your standards, not for an award. So if you're going to give awards out for the Lois Water Bill, I don't want mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Mall, and I live at 4104 Lynn Avenue. And I would like to talk about the mitigation and the process of getting mitigation, which seems to be really very confusing. When the engineer told us to do the berm, no one said anything about permits. I didn't call City Code and ask if there was even such a thing as a permit. The ordinance doesn't address that. We asked for, if any single person had ever gotten a mitigation of 100%. And what was sent to us was, you may be aware that people in New Tampa, people on Harbor Island pay no stormwater because of what they do with their stormwater. When we met with Ms. McLean and went through and talked to the engineer and talked to everybody, and this has been at least a year ago, she, we didn't, we have not met with her recently, but the last thing that she said to us was, "The council voted for the bond, and the bond has to be paid off, and so we need the money." And I think that that's no way to run a railroad. I think that if you're saying that there is a process for mitigation, it shouldn't be dependent on how much money the city owes on the bond, that they should never... Mr. Delfinger and Mr... I can't ever say his name anymore. You didn't... Charlie. We all know Charlie, right? Neither one of them, of them felt like we needed the bond to begin with. We could have done a pay-as-you-go. So anyway, I understand from the legal man that spoke this morning that your eyes are pretty, your hands are pretty much tied. But we appreciate you listening to us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, there being none, we move forward. Are there any requests by the public for reconsideration of legislative matters? There appearing none, we move forward. Okay, let's move to Public Safety Committee. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Absent of Public Safety Committee, Mr. Joe Citro, I move items 3 to 5.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next. Parks Recreation and Cultural Committee, Councilman Gudes.
Mr. Chairman, move 6 through 7, 8, 9, 10.
We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we move to Councilman Dingfelder, Public Works Committee.
One second. Take your time. All right, with the exclusion of item 12, I'll move items 8, so it'll be 8 through 11, and 13 and 14.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have Councilman Miranda, Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move items 15 and 16.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next we have Councilman Carlson for Building, Zoning, and Preservation.
I move 17 through 26.
And Councilman Dingfelder, was one of those pulled, or?
No, we amended that, and it looks like there's a substitute resolution on 21.
And 21?
Mr. Chair, also, number 19 and 20 have been asked to be removed from the agenda.
Should be a separate motion, please. They've been asked, 19 and 20 are being removed?
Per the addendum, it's a request of council.
Okay, so there you go. So if you could amend it, too.
I move that we move 17 through 26 minus 19 and 20 with the substitute resolution on 21.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, yes, sir.
A motion, please, to remove 19 and 20 from the agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Transportation, Councilman Maniscalco.
I move item 27. 28, pull for discussion. We have...
No, I'm good on 28 now.
Okay, so I'd like to move on to 27.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, I want to go ahead and move, if I may, to the pulled item. Now, is it only 12, Councilman Dingfelder?
12 and 46.
Okay, is staff here for 12 and 46?
46 might have been... 46 was a staff report, anyway.
Okay, I'm sorry. So it's 12?
Right.
Okay, so is staff here for 12? Go ahead.
Chuck Weber, Water Department Director. I'm here to answer any questions.
So, thank you, Chuck. And I think, is Greg Hart also here?
Here he is.
There he is. Yeah, this is mainly a WNBE question. And I know I'll start sounding like a broken record, but that's okay. I pulled items 12 and 46, but I'll probably can limit it to 12 right this second. If it's okay with Mr. Chairman, we can discuss both.
And wait, I'm sorry, you're going for 47?
46. 46. But to me...
Let's, before, if I may, let's just deal with the pulled item right now, as opposed to both?
Okay. They're related and almost identical. So we're talking about, in item 12, we're talking about a $2.9 million contract, and item 46, a $3.4 million contract. 12 is at the treatment facility, water treatment facility, and 46 is Seminole Heights flood relief design, design build.
And Councilman Dingfelder, we're only dealing with number 12 at this time?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, but my point being is, when I read this, and I read the backup, and I ask the questions about WNBE, again, week after week, month after month, I keep getting a similar response. I don't, it doesn't appear to me that we're doing very well in regard to our WNBE program, and specifically as related to black-owned businesses. And so that's why I asked Mr. Hart especially to report on that. But, Mr. Weber, you're welcome to speak on that issue.
I'll defer to him.
Gladly defer, right.
Please join me. Good morning, Council. Gregory Hart, manager of the Small Minority Business Development Office. In response to your question, sir, as you mentioned, I did provide some information and...
So Greg, let me interrupt you real quick. Wharton Smith, it appears to me, Wharton Smith has been operating under this or similar contracts in terms of design, build, engineering services at the plant for quite a while. And so I think in my question and seeing that, I said, "Great, they've been on site for a long time, lots, probably millions of dollars. How are they doing in terms of minority, small business, and specifically, black-owned business?" So let's, we'll focus on that and tighten up the conversation.
Certainly. Currently, they are performing as expected in terms of participation. We have, let's see here, about almost 9% of SLBE and black business participation, specifically on GMP number 2. There have not been any work, pay applications submitted to date. The work is getting underway under that phase of work, but that is beyond our expectations in that regard. Overall, there's a 27% SLBE WNBE participation outside of the black business participation. So we're monitoring that. We're quite pleased, and we even expect a continuation of that participation, if not more.
Okay, and specifically, as related to black-owned businesses, I didn't, I'm not sure I read anywhere about 9%. Even 9% sounds a little low.
Well, it's 8.8%. I rounded it up to 9%.
But that's, that is including small business and black-owned business?
No, sir, that is specifically black-owned businesses.
And that's 9%?
That's the 8%. Yes, sir.
8%. And what is our target?
Let's see, the goal on that particular project was 8.8%.
And why, you know, why is that goal lower than what we've talked about in the past? We've talked about 15 or more percent as a citywide goal.
Well, the 15%, I believe that was referenced previously, was in relation to the overall program goal. It had more to do with what would the expectation be over a 12-month or fiscal year period, based on the type of work that the city would be expected to procure. So it's not, the 15% was not a project-specific goal that is applied to every contract. Each contract is evaluated based on the scope of work and the subcontract elements that would be needed to prosecute the work. And then the goal is set based on the availability of firms that align with those subcontract opportunities. So...
Well, it appears to me that, in many ways, the goals are set by the contractor themselves, because in the bid documents that I've been reviewing, they seem to say, "We think we can find 8.8%." And then magically, that's what they find. Not, to me, again, I respect you and what you're doing regularly. I'm not criticizing you, or Mr. Weber. I'm just saying, as a city, it appears that that's what we do. So we're not going to get people to exceed those expectations, because they're the ones who are creating the expectation.
That is not correct, sir. The contractors do not set the goals.
Well, that's what I've been reading in the documents. But anyway, we can talk about it privately. I don't want to get into it here. All right, so with that, I mean, I'll move the item. It's under my department, and I want this progress to proceed. So I'll move the item, and then I'll have a motion afterwards, Mr. Chairman, with your deference.
Yeah, and let's move for motions at the end. We're getting a lot of motions in the middle, so we'll do motions at the end, but that's fine.
Sure.
Councilman Gudes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dingfelder, you always pull something out of a hat, I tell you. But I want to give accolades to the mayor and her administration for attempting to put on a vendor's program in the black community. I thought it was a great idea, a great concept, would bring things to the people. But I did speak to Ms. McGregor and Mr. Hart. What I look at as an old ball coach is, when I start the game, I want to finish the game. And during that game, I want to make sure that we score some points and got to the end to win. And if we don't win, what were the good strategies that helped us to get close to winning? And as I mentioned to you, and what I witnessed at the event was, we didn't finish. And hopefully, in the future, to help this process, Mr. Dingfelder was talking about, when we have these vendors come out to certify, to get ready to move to the next level, we need to finish. So it takes to be an all-day event to make, to get them to finish. We got to finish. So we can't leave people going to the starting block, but yet, we don't get to the finish line. So I want to encourage that as well as we move along. I think that's a big part of it, that we start programs in the beginning, but we never finish. We have to finish. And I think these numbers can increase if we finish.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, Councilman Dingfelder, will you move in there, sir?
Sure, I'll move item 12.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder to move item number 12. We have a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move onward to item number 29.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set the public hearing, move to set the public hearing for September 5, 2019, at 10:30 a.m. Actually, move 29 through 32 to be scheduled. All for September 5 at 10:30 a.m.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have public hearings. May I have a motion to open items 33 through 42?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, and, oh dear, before, I'm sorry, let's not vote on that. I apologize. We have to hear from you first. This is for item 54, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, council. Appreciate your time today. This is an important issue. The state legislature had several big bills this year that have changed the landscape a little bit in the quasi-judicial arena, and this is one of those issues, specifically with regard to HB 7103. There's one in particular provision that will impact your quasi-judicial matters today, which is why I have asked to speak to you. And my apologies, Kristen Moore, Legal Department. Good morning. So this is a change to 166033, and it requires that an approval, approval with conditions or denial of a quasi-judicial matter, specifically any development permits, will require you to have written findings in your decision. So the clerk is going to have to reduce findings that you have made and put those into your decision, so that it can go out in order to be in compliance with this requirement. As you know, previously, you've always had to cite a code section or something relevant with regard to denials, but with regard to approvals, you've simply read them and moved forward. But you now have to have written findings, and it is plural, implies at least two findings in order to support your decision. Those findings must be findings relevant to your decision. So, how do we go about doing this? The easiest way for the clerk to get this down, and for council to put this together, is to follow to a T Robert's Rules of Order. And Robert's Rules of Order calls for a motion and a second, then discussion, and then a vote, always in that order. This is important, because a lot of times, and council's generally pretty good about this, but it does happen, sometimes there's a lot of discussion, and then it's good discussion, but at the end of that discussion, it's a reference back to, and everything we just talked about, as the reason for the motion. And unfortunately, with the new state law, that's not going to give the court enough information to be able to get those written findings on the record. So it's really important that when you close the public hearing, that the... So it's really important that when you close the public hearing, that the first thing that happens is a motion with all the written findings that you can put in there to be stated. So what goes in this motion? Because you're going to need to have something in this motion, and what is that finding? Ideally, you'll cite to the code sections. And in most of your quasi judicial matters, specifically in your review hearings, for the most part, in your rezoning applications, and in your alcoholic beverage applications, you're going to have staff reports. And those staff reports always contain the individual code sections that are relevant to your consideration. So that is the best place to go to, to say, all right, what am I talking about in this particular application, and what do I need to be looking for? And then you'll add into that facts that you either find in the staff report, or you may add in facts that you hear at the public hearing, in order to build them into those code criteria. You can also rely on expert opinions. The staff that comes up and speaks to you are experts, we have planning experts that will speak to you. When there's transportation issues, we will often have someone from transportation that is a transportation and planning expert. And so you can rely on their opinions. In addition, if applicants, or even if opposition groups have experts on particular issues, you can consider those expert opinions. But everything that's not coming from an expert opinion needs to be a fact-based issue, not an opinion. Would encourage you to consider making notes during some of your hearings. A lot of times, you hear a lot of testimony, and by the time you get to the end, you've forgotten what that one very important witness had talked about. So do please think about making notes, so you can help, help you to do these findings. And please feel free, the motion that you make is going to be the motion of city council, it's going to be the findings of city council. And it's going to be very important in those, if it gets reviewed in a court, what was in those findings. So please feel free to add on, just because one of your other council members made the motion, please feel free to add something if you can think of another fact that they missed, or some other finding that you think is important to the issue. And then after that motion is made, then discussion is absolutely proper, and then ultimately your vote. So, just to walk you through a little bit about these motions and, and what you're going to want to see in them, this is a new requirement from the legislature, but it is, it does fit nicely into what we've always said in the law about quasi judicial hearings, and that is that they're like trials, there are little mini trials, and you're all sitting as judges in those. And you're applying the policies and the law that we have on the books on that day to these particular facts. This is an important point, you, you can't create new policy during that particular hearing. You may be inspired to create new policy as you see something come towards you, but you can only apply the law as it sits that day to a particular item. If you feel a policy should change, that's appropriate for discussion down the road, but it's not an appropriate thing to apply to this particular application. Well, why? When these items go to court, in most of the ones we'll see, it's called a writ of certiorari, and the judge is looking for whether procedural due process was afforded, whether the essential requirements of law were observed, and whether there was competent substantial evidence that supported your decision. And the issue of applying the policy as it sits today actually deals with two of these prongs, and the first one is procedural due process. So procedural due process requires notice and an opportunity to be heard, but not just any notice and not just any opportunity to be heard, it must be meaningful. And in order to be meaningful, they have to know the law that they are trying to meet when they come and speak before you. If you change the law during the hearing, they don't have an opportunity to bring forward all the facts that may have met that law. So that's why it's really important, it's only what you have on the books, policy-wise, when you hear that hearing, that you can consider those. And that is what should go into your motion. When you do these motions and you're doing the findings, you're going to want to look to the existing law on the books, and not something that you would like to see in the Also relevant, under due process, again, uphold the law, and you have to be impartial, impartiality is a big part of it, and you have to listen to the testimony that's offered. You can also elicit testimony, but you cannot offer it. So if you, and all of you know our city very well, it's one of the things that makes you wonderful council members, but you cannot offer the testimony. If you know that there is something in particular in that neighborhood, you cannot state that on the record. You can ask the witnesses about it, and get them to testify to it, but you cannot offer testimony. And if you do hear another council member offer testimony, you have to be cautious in making a motion, that you don't rely on that testimony from that council member, because that's not evidence that you can rely on for that decision. Ex parte communications is also something of concern in these quasi judicial processes, as Mr. Tredo mentioned earlier. You have to be very careful, if you've had, if you've heard from someone outside of this process, that that does not enter into your consideration, and definitely would not make it into your motion. So those ex parte communications, they are, the courts, I have a court case here, the court said that they're an anathema to quasi judicial proceedings. So you definitely don't want that, any of that to accidentally lead into your consideration. Essential requirements of law. What you should hear when you hear this is the correct law. And what is the correct law? It's just what city council standard is for that particular item. So, when you are considering rezonings, you're going to want to base your decision on the comprehensive plan as it sits at that day, the site plan zoning district criteria, if it's a PD, and the waiver criteria, again, if it's a PD. So you're going to be looking at those specific code sections, which again, will be in the staff report when you consider these. Special uses, very similar, you're going to be looking at the special use criteria, not the zoning criteria. And that's what's important here, is you're using that correct law each time that you're considering these. And in the event that you don't have a staff report that has that standard in front of you, it will be provided to you in the hearing. So just look at what's in front of you at those hearings to make sure that you have the right criteria. And relevant to your decision and your motion, you're going to want to make sure that motion cites that correct criteria. When you are doing the motions, when you're thinking of whether you're going to make a motion for approval or denial, you're looking for substantial evidence. Substantial evidence, the courts have defined, as evidence that's sufficient for a reasonable person to reach that conclusion. So you're looking, is there enough evidence in this record that I can consider, that should tell me that this is the action I should take? And this is where it's really important. That evidence can't just be substantial, it also has to be competent. And this is, when you're making your motions, you're going to want to ask yourself, which of, what facts do I have in the record? What things do I have in the record? What evidence do I have in the record that is competent, that I can rely on? And this is primarily going to be facts. And just as an example, if someone says, well, this intersection isn't safe, but they're a layperson, they're not a traffic engineer, they're not a transportation planner, that is just a layman's opinion, and it is not competent evidence, you cannot consider it. But if they come up here and tell you, there were three traffic accidents last week at this intersection, that is a fact, that is a true statement of fact, and that is something that you can consider. So you're going to be sitting there and sort of parsing and thinking about, you know, is this an opinion, is this fact? If you need help, Mr. Shelby and I are always here to help weigh in on these things, and what courts have found is opinion, and what courts have found is to be fact-based. The opinions that you can rely on, as I mentioned earlier, are expert opinions, but they have to be an expert in that field. So if you have a transportation planner up here, but they tell you that this is going to lower property values, not competent evidence. They are not an expert in property appraisal. Only someone who's an expert in property appraisal can offer an opinion of whether something will raise or lower property value. So when you're making your motions, you'll be looking for that competent evidence that you can rely on. Okay. Rezonings.
Councilman Carlson has it, can you do, do you want to do it now, or at the end?
If you don't mind just...
Yeah, it's probably, since it's a learning thing.
The, I've met with Thanh and several of the other neighborhood associations recently, and they're all gearing up and educating each other. One of the things I talk to them about is having Rebecca or someone educate the neighborhood association activists, and I, I think most of them are, are very up to speed, but for, if we can do something like that, that would be very helpful to all of us. And then number two, is it possible to, to elaborate a little bit more at the beginning of these hearings to everyone in the audience, so that they understand what, what we can and can't use? We can ask you questions with that, but assuming that there will be different participants in every audience, it would be good to be able to, to talk through that. And if we have a handout, that would be even better, but just so everybody knows we're on the same page, because as you said, if somebody doesn't want something, but there's no competent substantial evidence, we can't use it.
Correct. Yes, that's a great idea.
And that's a very good idea. And Councilman Dingfelder?
The requirement for competent substantial evidence has been stated in case law, going back to Snyder case, twenty-plus years ago. Unfortunately, I'm that old. But the, like, it's sort of a comment and a little bit of a question. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that folks who get up to the podium, even though they might be neighbors, can still provide us with competent substantial evidence. They don't necessarily have to hire the engineer to, to speak to us about the traffic in front of their house, they could provide pictures, that sort of thing, anecdotal evidence, you know, that, that has some basis to it, you know. And I agree, you know, maybe something really technical like stormwater or something like that, might require a little more formal training to, to identify where the rainwater's coming from, et cetera, et cetera. But again, I guess I want to, I want you to counsel us on, on that issue of, you know, what type of input could be competent substantial evidence, and yet it's still coming from that resident or homeowner. And finally, I don't want to discourage residents and homeowners and the typical citizens from coming down here and participating, especially if they do have some special credentials. You know, they might be the neighbor next door who's against it, but they also might be a traffic expert, you know, or what have you. So carry on along those lines.
Certainly. Yes, anything that's fact-based, the, is competent evidence. So if someone comes in and they say, I can't even get out of my driveway in the morning, or when I pull up to this intersection, I can't see oncoming traffic, those are all fact-based evidence that you can consider. What becomes problematic is the superficial opinion of, you know, there's a lot of traffic in this area, or there's too much traffic in this area, or I'm sure this is going to cause flooding. Those, those superficial opinions are what you want to be cautious of and not rely upon. But if they have fact-based evidence, for example, you know, it's not speculative, there's already a use there, and it's very loud, and it creates a lot of traffic, and they want to expand that use. If those neighbors come in and testify about some of those adverse effects coming out from that business at that time, that is fact-based evidence, because they're experiencing it. But if they're assuming that something's going to happen as a result of a business, that is an opinion and not fact-based evidence. So it's, it's a, it's a fine line in many respects, and that's why I said, please feel free to always reach out to, you know, either myself or Mr. Shelby or Ms. Kurt when she's here.
And if I just may follow up, that is a very fair question. Lay opinion is not competent substantial evidence, but the facts upon which they come to that opinion is competent substantial evidence, because it's, it's something that they have personal knowledge about. And that is competent testimony. The people who come before you don't know all that we are discussing today. So unfortunately, for instance, people invest their time in circulating opinion, saying, I'm against this. And unfortunately, for them, you're in a position of not being able to accept that opinion as a basis for your decision, because that will be overturned, it is not competent evidence. My point is this, they may not know what you need to know in order to make a good decision, but with this help, you do know what you need to know. Therefore, you have the ability to ask questions. So rather than testify, if there's a fact or something that you want to elicit from the person who probably has that information, I suggest you do it, as they say in jeopardy, in the form of a question. Take the opportunity to have the witnesses give you the evidence that they indicate that they need, but is not in a form that a judge will accept. You have that ability.
Well said. I completely agree. Okay, so, in the packet that was passed out to you, there is a document that looks like this, it says rezoning motions at the top. This is intended to be a motion helper to help you think about these things and help phrase some of your motions. This has for approval, as well as denial on these, and it makes some suggestions, you know, you're going to refer to the staff report in these types of situations. I've also passed out to each of you, an example, staff report, and just wanted to bring a couple of points to your attention on these. This is for a PD, a planned development zoning. And right here, you can see the waivers. This is always on the front of your PD, you will not see waivers in Euclidean zoning requests, but only in planned development zoning requests. But here are waivers. Anytime you have a waiver, this is a section of the code they are not wanting to comply with. These are always interesting points that you're going to want to note as you hear these applications, and what type of testimony there is about how these waivers, consistent with the waiver criteria, are being otherwise dealt with, or the concerns of the code and of the comprehensive plan are otherwise being addressed. Here are the waiver criteria. Again, you will see these within the staff reports, and they will be there, as well as some analysis of the waiver and these particular circumstances. Your staff report will have summary of the request, and then what the staff findings are. So as you're looking for making those motions, again, you may also draw from testimony that you have received at the hearing, but this is a good starting place for you, as you start to draft, as you start to put together your motion in your mind, or with your notes, to look at what the staff is finding, and to see, and you don't have to agree with staff, by the way. All you have to do is look at the facts that they're presenting to you, and you give consideration to whether you agree or disagree, and if you disagree, you might want to think about what those bases are, and what testimony you heard, what factual testimony you heard that supports that basis. So, in the event you wanted to move approval... I lost my motion helper in that short timeframe. That was quick. So let's say you wanted to move approval of planned development rezoning, you would move an ordinance, just like you typically would. Oftentimes, with planned developments, as well as with alcoholic beverage applications, there are revisions to the site plan that are required before, between first and second reading. If you've heard that from staff, then you'll want to also direct to the revisions to be made. And then you'll simply indicate that they've met their burden group, which is stated there, and then you'll refer to these findings in the staff report. That they have, they have removed the trees under, as required by the code, they have the correct tree table, that they've otherwise met the criteria, that they've otherwise dealt with any waivers that they're asking for. So you'll go through each of those things, and what testimony you've either seen in the staff report or heard that, that supports that. And you can also add conditions if needed. It's the same thing that you will see. And I have also provided this in the packet that you were given. The alcoholic beverage motions, very similar. You'll want to direct revisions to the site plan if you're moving approval on first reading. And then you will go through what their standard is, it's section twenty-seven, one twenty-nine of the code, and then you'll, you'll want to say that it's compatible, if there's waivers to distance requirements, that there's been mitigation of that waiver, you can add conditions if needed. Similarly, if you go to deny, there is motion language grant that is here, and you would say that it's not compatible with the area, that they've not otherwise mitigated the waivers that they are requesting. And here are your general standards, right here on the same page, for you to... And here are your general standards, right here on the same page, for you to refer to. And they are also in your staff reports. Here's a sample staff report on that as well. You can see here a finding of inconsistent, and then the waivers are all stated and shown. So you can refer to those very easily and quickly when you're putting your motions together and considering whether or not they have done them. Here is, there's the site plan, and here are the code criteria, all listed for you and for ease of reference. I have provided to you in the packet some items on conditions of approval. I can go through that with counsel very quickly, or I've tried to provide it in a format that should be very easy to reference and read. When you do the conditions of approval, you are similarly going to want to include findings that support the imposition of that condition and addressing that adverse condition, the adverse impact that the condition is intended to ameliorate. Any questions?
Any questions from council members? No? No? Councilman Carlson.
So one question is, how best can we seek legal counsel during, I asked you this before, how can we seek legal counsel in the, in the public forum? We can call you up and ask you a question, but that's the only way, right?
Generally, yes. You know, if you have a question, you know, is this, you know, if you need help crafting a condition, if you are uncertain whether or not something is competent evidence, then that is definitely what we are here for. Please feel free to call us up, and we will be happy to address it.
Thank you.
If I could also follow up, and Ms. Moore and I have discussed this, especially with this process changing, the way the legislature is directing counsel, it's becoming less quasi and more judicial. And there are certain things that in order for us to protect the record, we will ask to be recognized to specifically give you guidance for the purposes of the record, to tell you that what somebody inadvertently is presenting you is evidence. It may be substantial, but it's not competent, and therefore cannot necessarily be considered as a basis for your decision, whatever that is. So that is some guidance that we are going to be proactively participating in to be able to protect the record and protect counsel. From whatever decision that counsel makes, it is ultimately the goal to have it be sustained by a court. The beauty of findings of fact by this counsel is that in a sursurary review, judges cannot reweigh your evidence and rethink your findings of fact. So that's to your advantage, that when you hear testimony that is fact-based, that you put that into your motion, because that is a basis that you are basing your decision on, that a judge will see and cannot reweigh that.
All right, Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Shelby, I like it when we think alike, because I just scribbled on here, "We are the finders of fact."
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think I can't stress that enough to counsel. That hasn't changed, but it's important that we remember it, because it's, you know, it's an extremely important part of the process. And I also might even suggest that in, in this language that you're giving us, as part of the motion, say, you know, and I might already say this, I don't know, but, you know, that, that as the finder of fact, we, you know, we have, we find these facts, and then that way, it's right there for a future judge in review, and as Ms. Shelby says, that judge has to pay attention to it. It's right there. We are the finders of fact. Judges say it all the time over in the courthouse, and in this case, we are the finders of fact, and here's the facts we've found to support our motion to support or deny, either way. Thank you.
And if I could just follow up with one more point. Councilmember Dingfelder, that's an excellent point. The second shoe to that, the second step, is to take your code and apply the provisions of the, the facts that you have found them to that provision of the code to say, "These facts support that provision of the code, therefore it supports my decision, whatever it is." Or in the case of the findings of fact, you say, "These facts are in contradiction to the requirements of the code, therefore it does not meet the code requirements, therefore it supports a deny."
Because, because the facts that we're using need to relate to the law, the code, the law that's there.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time, counsel. If any of you need refreshers, follow up, anything like that, I will always make myself available.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Moving along now, we are going to go into, I believe, item 33 in our public hearings. Can I get a motion to open it?
That motion was held.
Okay.
It had not been voted on.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All right. Do we have swearing witnesses? All right. If you plan on speaking during any of these public hearings, please stand up to be sworn in.
... or tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
All right. We'll begin with number 33.
Good morning, Council LaShawn Doc, Planning and Development. Council, item 33 is REZ 1883. This item is before you this morning for second reading. And counsel, you may remember, there was one modification required to be made between first and second reading on the site plan. That was to incorporate a 10-foot sidewalk along the south border of the property. That has been made. Those plans have been signed by the zoning administrator, and they have been provided to the clerk for certification. And I'm available if you have any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions? No? No? All right. Next up, Mr. Gardner.
Good morning. Truitt Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive. We were last in front of you on June 27th. As LaShawn mentioned, the one change that needed to be made in between readings has been made. And again, just as a brief recap, the proposal that we're bringing in front of you is a part of a mediated settlement recommendation that was done by the special magistrate, Scott McLaren of Hillward and Henderson handled that mediation, and everything that was recommended was agreed to at that mediation. Again, just by way of recap, as far as the uses that we're proposing, which are retail, multifamily, and mini warehouse, those are all permitted uses within the Channel District. The one caveat to that is for the mini warehouse, there's performance standards. We have been deemed to meet all those performance standards, and therefore all those uses are permitted. Secondly, with respect to the density, the density that we're requesting is allowed within the Channel District. And then thirdly, and which is the biggest difference from when this matter first came in front of you, there were waivers on it. Those waivers are now gone, so we're not seeking any waivers at all. And finally, and I'll just put this up on the Elmo just so you see, as far as all of the reviewing agencies, they have found us to be consistent. This was the original report before, as Ms. Kurt mentioned, the transportation was due to the waiver. That waiver has been removed. Therefore, all reviewing agencies have deemed us to be consistent. So with that, we would request your approval of this matter. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from counsel? And Mr. Shelby, did you want to say something, sir?
Yeah, I have a housekeeping matter, counsel, that I neglected to do after the witnesses are sworn in. Please excuse me for doing that, but at this time, I ask that all written communications relative to today's hearings, which have been made available for public inspection in city council's office, be received and filed into the record at this time.
Some...
We have a motion by Councilman Escalco, a second by, I believe it was Councilman Goode, or Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And finally, just a reminder that if any members of council have had any verbal communication with any petitioner, his or her representative, or any member of the public in connection with any of today's hearings, that that member of council should, prior to action, disclose the following: the person or persons, group or entity with whom the verbal communication occurred, and the substance of that verbal communication. Thank you.
Councilman Goode.
Mr. Shelby, I did receive an email from a young lady, Mrs. Natasha Goodley, regarding to the proposed site. She emailed us a site plan and also emailed some rules regarding the Channel District. I immediately went up to legal to ask in reference to the site plan with Ms. Moore. Ms. Moore showed me the site plan that indicated the, what the complaint was saying was not inconsistent, but was consistent, what Ms. Moore showed me. So I want to let you know we did, someone did send that.
So my question is, you had no personal verbal communication regarding this, is that correct?
Only she called and said she was sending an email.
That, that was the extent of it. And you received the email, and from my understanding is you placed that in, in the box outside?
Correct.
Thank you very much. So that would be part of the record that counsel made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Dingfelder.
So we've received, and it's all in the record, for anybody to review, we've received numerous emails from channel side residents in opposition to this, as, and most of them specifically target the, the proposed par- partial use of the property as storage or warehouse. I just want for the record, so the record's abundantly clear, and so the community perhaps has a better understanding of our last vote, I need either legal or staff to just clarify one more time, the, the, what, what does our code say about storage and warehouse, and is, is that up for debate or consideration in terms of our decision-making here today? Specifically as related to the conversation we had 10 minutes ago about, you know, what's appropriate for us to consider?
Yes, thank you, Kristin Moore, Legal Department, and I'll let Ms. Doc address this, but I believe that our code allows the storage facility as the code sits today, and so it would be an allowed use. Ms. Doc, could you address that?
Yes. Council LaShawn Doc, Planning and Development. That is correct. The uses that are requested under this application are all permitted uses within the Channel District.
Okay. And...
The use of the air-conditioned storage, in addition, in the Channel District also requires performance standards to be met, and the applicant has met those standards, and that's provided within the staff report.
Okay, perfect. And then going back to legal, what, what advice do you give us as related to all of the, this correspondence saying, "Deny it on the basis of we don't want warehouse and storage in the Channel District"? We've just heard factual testimony from staff interpreting the code, interpreting the design standards that have been met in her opinion. Where does that leave us as related to our review?
Kristin Moore, Legal Department. Where that leaves you in your review is the law as it sits today allows this, and so you cannot impose new policy. It sounds like they would like a new policy of the city to be changed, but that cannot be applied to this development. You must apply the existing policy to this development.
So if we want to change that policy, we have to do it through change of the ordinance or code down the road, not today?
You would have to, yes, and change the land development regulations down the road.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. So no, Councilman Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we heard this case, there's wonderful people making the presentation of both sides, the neighbors and the attorneys were fine individuals, all that I know, but, you know, it goes beyond what earlier they said about how you pass an ordinance and what you have to say, how you voted for, and how you voted against, and why. Well, let me explain this. Some of us have been here for a long time, others for even longer times. What am I speaking about? If you close your eyes and go back a few years, there was nothing just east of this building, very little. What'd you find in the area where these items are located at, we're speaking about today in item number 33? There were loading dock for banana boats, which are not there anymore, that I know of. There were storage areas, yes, but not of the kind we're talking about. There was storage area when you draw a semi or a large truck to come pick up the product that you had and called "storage." There was one or two storage areas there where you came from your restaurant and called your number of your loading information that you had in that and received your product, and off you went. There was Amazon hoses, where you needed some parts or difference, you went there and you picked it up. Coca-Cola Company, they have large trucks, smaller trucks, and semis, even larger trucks. And Citroen nitrate operation going on, all in the same area that I'm talking about. There was an area that was in despair and not quite acceptable to what we were trying to do to change the image of the city of Tampa. Not my image, not your image, not City Hall's image, but everyone's image. We did it in Ebor City, and it was coming this way. There was rezonings, one after another, that changed the idealism and the realization of what kind of city you wanted going forward. This is what we have today. I didn't vote for, against it because of the building. I didn't vote for, against it because of the design. I didn't vote against it because of the storage area. However, that storage area comes with additional traffic, a possibly large truck, and a reduction of loading zones. That's one of the reasons. And if you really wanted to do it right, just for the individuals that you're talking about, to make it a area where the people that go into your units that you either going to rent, sell, or whatever you want to do with them, I've seen it where they do it inside in the parking garage, where you have an area you can rent from within, not from without. And that's the reason I voted no, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Next, we move to public comment. If anyone is here to comment on item number 33, please come forward, three minutes at a time, or three minutes per person, I should say.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Kristin Moore, Legal Department, just before we get into public comment, just to clarify, Councilman Miranda, your remarks and comments are noted, but that would not be evidence within this hearing, just so everyone knows.
Thank you, Judge.
Is it just my, is it just my ears, or do you all have a hard time hearing them? It seems like it's turned down or something.
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Daly. I live in the...
Oh, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
You're fine.
Towers of Channel Side.
Oh, no, and ma'am, just one second, if I may.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am, and you can stay there. Anyone else having a hard time hearing?
Okay, I'll just...
You did? Okay.
I, well, earlier on in the meeting, I went into the cable control room and, because I was having trouble hearing.
Okay.
But if you're having trouble hearing, we can ask them to see if they can do anything.
It depends on the person, I guess. I don't know.
Then we could, you could ask people to speak up if you're having trouble.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Marilyn Daly. I live in the Towers of Channel Side, right down the street from where this proposed storage unit is going to be. And we only found out a couple of days ago, and we tried to email like crazy. We couldn't. I have some already from people that signed, but we were unaware of the proposal of storage facility. Residents sent an electronic message on our building. I'm certain several residents already emailed. In addition, I have 11 more letters. I had a storage unit received, and they're just down the street. Why do we need an additional storage facility in our area, in an area that actually is being redeveloped? People dump their garbage when they put this up in the storage unit, and when they clear out the storage unit, the stuff that they don't want to take, they throw off to the side. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Todd Pressman, 200 Second Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg. I'm an agent for South Forest Side Storage. You have complete unanimous opposition of the many storage use from the leadership of the Channel Side District. I'll hand out those letters to you, as well as many citizens and emails. There's a common theme throughout all the residents who live in the immediate area that tell you that the use is incompatible, in their opinion, noting the opposition from the project site and the opposed owners here, noting that the proposed warehouse site would be here, the parking garage would be here. That's going to result in, and this is the parking garage across the street, that's going to result in a canyon of non-use, of no activity, which is the opposite of what's made Channel Side successful, which is liveliness, vigor, vitality, and active residential. So all the communications you receive, and the letters I'm going to give you, from the CDCA, the Community District Citizens Association, which is your recognized citizen group, and your CRA, your CAC-appointed CRA advisory members, run through the same points of incompatibility of this use from what, regarding Mr. Miranda's comments, of what has made Channel Side successful. The second item that you see that runs through all the comments for the people living there every day is that these tight, small streets will not be able to maintain trucks and U-Haul drivers for five loading burs throughout those streets, particularly since, as you can see, Channel Side's become phenomenally successful with all the scooters that are piled up on all the corners. Separate point: Just because a use is permitted by zoning does not necessarily mean it's compatible. All you have to think about is all those uses along Dale Maybury you voted on that are allowed in CG, like restaurants, and a lot of them are not compatible to the joining residential. So I would disagree with great respect that you can have a use in, along this, the zoning categories, but that doesn't always mean it's compatible. Look at your staff report. There are many criteria in the staff report, as the legal department told you, that refer to, refer to compatibility. There's three or four. There's also several criteria that refer to... There's three or four. There's also several criteria that refer to not causing damage or injuries to the existing community. And finally, your staff report also contains criteria that it is to be an integrated, mixed use. Our understanding at this point is that there's still only one door between the residential and the mini storage, and that is a, as I've read, a secured door. That's the only passage between the two. Our opinion is, and the residents who live there who are on record with you, don't feel that that meets that point. The other separate point is eleven thousand five hundred square feet of retail does not compensate for a hundred and forty thousand square foot storage in terms of creating that area and that canyon. So remind you that your purview is to look over all the criteria, all the zoning, and I'll hand these letters out to you if I may. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. And Councilman Gudes?
LaShawn Doc, Planning and Development.
Thank you, ma'am. Channel Side has criteria, correct?
Correct.
This particular site plan, has it met the Channel Side criteria?
Yes, so Councilman?
Far as the building is being one versus two, has it met the Channel Side criteria?
Yes, so within the channel district, the proposed use of mini warehouse requires certain performance standards be met, and those have been provided for you within the staff report. In each requirement that was listed for the performance standards, the applicant has met those standards.
Storage unit has to be what, cannot be on a bottom floor, has to be up?
So those, those are starting within the staff report. It's under section twenty-seven dash two oh four C. And those are performance standards within the channel district. So I can review the standards if you like, I'm not sure. So the first is the use is limited to the upper floors of buildings, and this is for the mini warehouse use. So the storage component is located on floors two through seven, so this standard is met. The second one is the use must be part of a mixed-use project with at least two uses, one of which must be residential, and that component is incorporated within the request. The next one is the use may not exceed forty percent of the total square footage of the project. And that standard has been met. The square footage for the storage is at fourteen thousand square feet, or thirty percent of the total. The fourth standard is that the use must be integrated within the structural system of the building, and that has been met with the elevations and the site plan proposed to you. The next one is the use is allowed in zoning districts CD one, two, and three. And that would, that would be met just based upon the current zoning of the property and the requested under this PD. The next standard is that the rental of the mini warehouse unit shall not be limited to residents of the building housing the use. So it has to be open to the public, and that has been met. The next would be the storage of hazardous materials, other than materials common in household use, and in retail and commercial businesses are prohibited, and that is the same requirement that's for any mini storage use or air-conditioned storage use within the city. That would be met. The next one, number eight, is on lands with heavy industrial future land use designations, which is an IH land use designation. That would not apply in this case because the future land use is not industrial. So that's a not applicable. And those are the performance standards within the channel district.
And basically, for this project, they've met all the performance standards?
Yes.
So basically, what I'm hearing, I know the residents still want a certain type of project, but from what I'm seeing, they've met all of the Channel Side's criteria. So basically, this is gonna be a future discussion to change whatever criteria for channel, if that's the case. But right now, they've met all the standards that Channel has set in place already, correct?
Correct. The applicant has met those standards. Any amendments proposed would have to be proposed through a text amendment. We have a text amendment process, and that's twice a year it can be submitted.
Thank you.
For review.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Silverman. I'm a real estate broker. Just want to say that, you know, we're a nation of, of laws and, and legal institutions, and this project has passed all the legal standards. I don't think there's, from what I understand, there's, it should not be approved. Also, there's been a lot of conversation and talk about how bad storage can be, and all negative things about storage. It's, it's strange to me that the most eloquent speech against the storage actually came from another storage company that was not too far away. To me, it feels more like competition than really opposing the concept of storage. And when you look at all the key points in opposition to the storage project, there's three main themes that always come up. One is storage, the second one is trucks, and the third one is congestion. So when you take the first term, storage, it evokes an image of an ugly industrial building, heavy equipment, just incompatible with urban living. That's not the case of this building. You've seen this building. There's nothing like it anywhere. It's beautiful, and it certainly improves, is a vast improvement over what exists there now. The second conversation and, and fear is about trucks. I own some self-storage facilities. I manage some, so I have a little bit of familiarity with what goes on in the mindset of people who come to these facilities. First of all, the city code and what this project is, is not storage. It's mini storage. That is a whole different thing from big industrial storage where people park ugly equipment and dirty things. These are people who live, they're coming to Channel District to live in small apartments. You're having millions of square feet of apartments come in. And where are they gonna put all their belongings? What are they gonna do with those old photograph albums that they can't keep at home because it's got their girlfriend in? What about the pair of jeans that maybe next year it'll fit them, so they'll put it away just for that? Or, or, or a bicycle, or those old law books? It's part of the fabric of life now, is to ha- it's, and it's amen- and it's an amenity. So don't confuse storage with mini storage. The last point is congestion. You know, we said, it was stated at the last meeting that many, that's, mini storage is one of the least traffic driver, the second most traffic driver of any commercial development. I don't know what the first one is. Maybe it's a roach motel where people check in, or tenants check in, they never check out. But I can tell you with storage, people come in, and then they come occasionally, move things. This is an urban storage environment. I don't think you're gonna see a lot of trucks. It'll be people in apartments dropping off things.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please. And Councilman Maniscalco, did you wanna say something?
No, I'm just gonna make a jump.
All right, next.
Good morning again. I'm Topher Morrison. I am a Channel District resident as of about three months ago. Lived downtown and just moved there, and I was actually quite surprised and pleased by how walkable the area is. I would just say a few things as you consider whether or not to approve this project. If we have a city council who only makes decisions based upon what is legally allowed versus what makes sense for the environment and the residents and what is right, then I don't think we're gonna have a city that evolves. I can give you example of how we didn't allow something that should have been allowed on our last administration when Omar Garcia wanted to have a waiver for parking spaces downtown in the micro apartments, and that got denied, and that should have been approved. So I would just ask that you think about whether or not this actually makes sense for the residents. Think of it this way. That street meridian for Channel District residents is very much like our Riverwalk. It's how we get connected to Sparkman Wharf. And we would never consider, I wouldn't think, or want to have a storage facility right in front of the Riverwalk. We wouldn't want to have one on our Meridian Street, which is where we're trying to activate our transportation with our walkability. We already have multiple, here's a fact, we already have multiple vacant retail spaces that are already going unused, and they're staying, waiting for the density to increase. We need density of population for retail to work. We don't need that lack of density. I don't think we need to develop, developer to come in and build a low-maintenance facility with very high-priced retail, which will probably be priced so high, they won't have to bother with having a tenant, and this is a thinly disguised veil of land banking, waiting for them to tear it down in ten years when the property values are up four hundred percent. So I would ask that you consider what the overall usability is, and it's not gonna increase our walkability. And once again, remember, walkability equals profitability for a city. It makes it more enjoyable, it makes people want to move there, it increases the traffic value. So I choke you. Make the right decision, do what's best for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Councilman? My name is Henry Lewis. I reside at one one nine North Eleventh Street, Channel District. I hope you all received my extensive letter. This is the fourth hearing on storage, the third on a joint development, as you all know. Well, part of you don't know because you're new. The Channel District has been my home for fifty-two years, corner of Eleventh and Washington. It's taken over twenty years to rid our, our district of unwanted storage and warehouses, period. This development has one door, egress and ingress. The apartments have their own self-storage. Every building in the Channel District, with the exception of the Meridian, has storage. We don't need storage. Bell Channel Side is only fifty percent occupied with storage. This is gonna bring in outside people who want storage. And like Topher had mentioned, this is our Riverwalk, to what the Riverwalk is to downtown. It is our entry, and you're gonna destroy our community with bringing more outsiders into a, a, a live, walk, and work, the first which has ever been created in the city, which I'm proud to say I helped. Also, you have, your community advisory council has voted four times consecutively to deny this. The CDCA has voted four times consecutively to deny this. So I don't know why we have a CAC anymore, or maybe even a community associations. If no one pays attention, and if you don't listen to your advisors, what good are they? Codes were old codes. People don't know codes. A common resident doesn't know anything about codes. They hear something a day later, and they come in. So you have your laws, and you have your citizens. I think the, the elements of the compatibility are not present, to which this is essential to the criteria of all of the development in the Channel District. By allowing the storage units to be built, we're gonna destroy our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
Rob Rosner, CA, CRA manager for the Channel District. This past month, my CAC had voted to submit a letter, and I asked me to submit that letter, so that's what I come to. Should I just pass this to you?
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please, ma'am.
I'm introducing myself. I'm Christine. I'm in the Channel Side. I are doing the business at least thirty years already. And I appreciate that the city council gave me this opportunity to express my opinion because I think this project is very important, which can benefit the most of local people. For residential and this area people living in condo and apartments, they don't have too much space for extra furniture or personal belonging. Therefore, if there's a storage nearby, that definitely helping the local people also. Also, in, I will be helping more new businesses grow this area, and it will help in promote local economic growth, as well as increasing the business tax income for the city. However, not all project plans will be perfect for the, hundred percent for the, accepted by the everyone. Even the project is made by United States President, but it's the pro- project goes smoothly, and we're looking for the long term. I believe it will be a good project. As my con- conversation there, I strongly support this project, and I hope city council will honor my opinions and serious consider this project will be helping to benefit the city, most of local people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Megan Scalise, and I live in the Channel District area. For a fourth time, many residents and business owners have stated their opposition, and hope it again will be turned down by you. As a resident and a business owner in the Channel District, I strongly oppose the framework development with regards to the mini storage use. We do not need, nor want, public storage in the neighborhood. As a sitting member of the CD, CRA, CAC, and also the Channel District Community Alliance, simply listening to the actual stakeholders want, will prove to you all how distressing this project will be in the center of our active district. It's literally in the heart of our district. Every call, meeting, and message I've had from constituents in opposition to this project, nobody objects to businesses nor developments creating jobs. This is a huge building that will hardly create any jobs. The hard fact is that most self-storage facilities only employ one to two people on average. And for city council to allow anything into our neighborhood that doesn't create a dump, that creates a dumping ground of unwanted furniture, trash, and debris is ludicrous. This is on Meridian Avenue again. There needs to be more comprehensive overall plan for the Channel District, and it should be developing condos, not rentals, active green spaces, businesses, and tourism. This project does none of that. Shame on the developers for still pushing this project through. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and we are at twelve o'clock right now, and?
Thirty minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. We have a motion by, and before we do that, how is everybody for time here on council? Everybody okay for?
Yes, sir, I want to give thirty minutes so the judge-to-be doesn't scold me again.
Okay.
Because anything after twelve, we couldn't be, hear it, and do legal fact, because we say we're gonna quit at twelve over time.
Twelve-thirty, for now. Yeah. How, how, how does council, I can, I can go until three o'clock, frankly. I mean, I got, not on this particular one, but on, on the remaining ones?
See, he wants you to stay at three o'clock. I like that gentleman there. The rest of her leaving.
How, how was everybody's schedule today? Everybody?
I'm voting to stay. That's what we gotta, I mean.
Yes. Let, let's do it for thirty minutes, and then we'll assess it at that time. So let's, okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go ahead. Okay, and sir, go ahead. Is anyone here for public comment additionally other than this gentleman here? Okay, you'll be the last one. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm John Olson. I live in Towers of Channel Side, and I just, I'm opinion probably, not the fact, but I moved down here a couple of years ago into a community where I enjoy walking my dog. I walk to restaurants. We walk our dog on a stroller, and this unit just doesn't seem to be consistent with what I expected in Channel Side. I didn't know anything about the zoning laws and what's allowed down in Channel Side, but this isn't the vision that I saw when I moved to Channel Side as, as far as a booming residential entertainment area. So I'm just, again, I'd send in a letter just saying that I'm opposed to this. Again, I'm totally unaware of the zoning allowance, and I didn't even hear about this until two days ago. So to me, it's frustrating that I wasn't aware of it, and how we have a mechanism that more of us, I only live two blocks away, and I was unaware of this. But to me, it's not consistent with what I moved into, and would not be consistent with me comfortably walking my dog down or strolling to restaurants and the traffic that would, I assume, be there related to the activities. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, rebuttal for the?
Sure, Gardner four hundred North Asher Drive. Appreciate all the thoughts and sentiment, both of council, as well as the neighbors, both pro and con. both pro and con. I've had the fortune of, and actually, Henry Lewis, who spoke, has been a dear friend of mine for fifteen years, and have had the fortune of handling most of the large projects in the Channel District, and I'm proud of what we accomplished, both me as a developer, which I quickly learned, I should not be a developer, I should be a lawyer, as well as the clients I've represented. And from a design standpoint, I think this project is absolutely beautiful, and is thoughtful, and I know there were some attempts by some to tear at the design, but we're proud of this, and we're going to stand behind it. Secondly, and I'll handle the objections in kind of an omnibus format, but what I heard really at the end of the day were two things, and Ms. Miranda had the utmost respect for you, as well as some of the people that spoke, that this is too much storage, and there is a protection provided in the performance standards, which again, we meet, and which states, I'll put it up here just so you can see it. This is directly from the staff report and directly from code. The use, which is the storage use, may not exceed 40 percent of the total square footage of the project. So there's a balance in there to make sure you're not having too much storage, and what we're proposing is 30 percent, so far beneath that. Finally, Mr. Goode, I think you were the one that nailed it. This use is allowed, it's permitted, we meet all the standards. If on a going-forward basis, the Channel District does not want storage anymore, the way to handle that is through a comp plan amendment, but not by denying this. We're a nation of law, we're a city of law, and we meet all the standards. And to that end, we have full staff report. The use is a permitted use in a matter of right. The density is permitted. We are seeking no waivers. And then finally, this proposal that came out was a mediated settlement agreement with both the city as well as the neighbors. Everything that was asked for, we have accomplished, we have incorporated into the site plan, and we would ask for your support. And with that, Scott McLaren, who handled the mediation, also wanted to say something.
Scott McLaren, Suite 3700 Bank of America Plaza, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Thank you for considering our project. We did have a mediation that was convened by Scott Stiegel, special master. We invited to that mediation more members of the public than were required. All members of the public that attended had some concerns, and my client, or our client addressed every single concern raised, even those that were not required by code, including the access between the storage and the residential, and a ten-foot sidewalk along Whiting Avenue. So the developer here has been very, has listened, and has been very responsive to what the neighbors have asked for and done its best. This is a beautiful project. This is not a project where you see any kind of ugly outside storage. It all looks, it's all integrated like it should be architecturally. It's a beautiful project. It doesn't look like self-storage. The objections, the overriding objection is that the residents don't want storage. And I understand that, but we are, as Mr. Gardner pointed out, a nation of laws, and really, this is a fairness issue. So that the city council enacts ordinances, and they explain to developers, hey, if you're going to develop in our city, this is what you have to do. You have to jump through these hoops. Hoop one, hoop two, hoop three. The developer hires architects, engineers, spends a lot of money, jumps through all of those hoops, meets all the requirements. So legally, and in fairness, we would respectfully submit, it's not fair to change the rules of the game now. Storage is permitted, we meet the requirements, and we respectfully submit, we're required to approve, we're required, we're authorized for approval. Thank you. Now, in terms of the other, there was one objection about traffic. The only evidence of record concerning traffic comes from the applicant's traffic engineer, Steve Henry, who's an expert. He testified in his report that this is the second lowest traffic generator of any use authorized in the city. The only one that's less is a cell tower. So this is a very, very low traffic generator, and is actually going to, according to Mr. Henry, again, who's the only, who provided the only evidence of record, is going to generate less traffic than if that storage area was residential or commercial. So for those reasons, we would respectfully request approval. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? Or actually, you're out of time, so...
Again, sure, Gardner, 400 North Asher. I just had one thing which came up before, wanted to reiterate, it's a part of the development agreement, and I think Mr. Morrison brought this up, of this concern that the self-storage will be constructed and the multifamily never will. The development agreement, which is a part of this, absolutely 100 percent precludes that. You can read it in the development agreement. I'm stating it on the record now, whereby, in order for that self-storage to occur, and this again is to the integration of the uses, the multifamily also has to be built. So there is no way that that self-storage could start construction unless the multifamily starts. Secondly, there's no way the self-storage could get a certificate of occupancy unless the multifamily is built.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Miranda, and then...
Very quickly, so I clear my own air and my own mind. Even the flower companies leaving, which was manufacturing goods that we all need, because why? The area's changed very drastically. And this council member is not against storage. If I said that, it was misinterpreted in one way or the other. What I was drilling at is that you've got Banana Docs, large storage areas of product, which you have to come get. You had Burger Ration, it was a food distributor company. You had Amazon Holes, you had Coca-Cola, you had Citroen United States, and the flower company, which I forgot to leave. Those all created what? Large trucks. And by the evidence shown by one side or the other, that Meridian is a gateway to something. It's not Magdill Avenue, where large trucks can come through in some parts of it, and it's not, certainly not Del Mayberry, where a lot of trucks go by. It's a residential area that has changed from what it was before. It was an industrial area to speak of, and that's changed. And I'm just saying this so they can rebuttal, and they can have the time now. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Councilman Dingfelder, you had a good comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Rob from the city, and I apologize, I forgot your last name. Is he still here?
Ross.
Yeah. Just to clarify, what's it, Ross?
Rosner.
Rosner. I'm sorry, Rob. Just to clarify, your role in today's hearing, you worked for us down in the Channel Side, do a great job. You appeared and you presented us with the CAC letter, but you're not giving us a city opinion on this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just one...
This was strictly as through the Roberts rules, from the CAC. They wanted to provide this letter, and they asked me to hear...
And you gave them the courtesy of doing that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And good point to make. Anyone else? Yeah, and Councilman Goode's.
You know, for many years, I had to enforce laws and rules. And unfortunately, right now, we're at a point to where there are laws and rules with this situation. That's my district's citizens have a lot of concerns, and I respect those concerns. But at the end of the day, I have to look at the rule of law, and what, we've had special, special master meetings, we've had opinions already given by a magistrate. We have a lot of...
Can I interrupt, just to the point of order?
And Councilman...
Do you want to close the public hearing and then get into this? Because it sounds to me like we might be headed toward a motion or something like that.
No.
No motion? Okay, I apologize.
No motion.
Continue, Councilman Goode's.
Just want to give my take on what I've heard, what we've seen. We're in a, I believe, I believe we're, where I'm at, I'm stuck with a decision that I've got to make, that I've made before. I think when you look at laws, sometimes when they ever, ever these affect people or communities, you have to change those laws. I think down the road, we have to look at maybe changing the law, the rules for the Channel District, once again, if we're looking to prevent what we're doing, I possibly may do now. But what really bothered me during this whole time, when I hear buzzwords, and I guess me being African-American, sometimes when I hear certain buzzwords, it kind of raises the hair I do have left on my skin. When I hear the word outsiders, I've heard that in my community a lot, a lot of times, and people, you know, it bothers me, that word, because I look at the city of Tampa, it's for everybody. When I hear word outsiders, that means that we're discriminating, we're not letting certain people in, or we, that bothered me. I'm just going to be candid with you, outsiders. To me, I love the Channel District. I go down there on those biggest Thursdays, and I, with the trucks, and I don't feel like I'm an outsider. I live in District Five, and I feel like my money is good anywhere in the city to go to, and for me to hear the word outsider, that truly, truly bothered me this afternoon. I hope not to ever hear that word again, but I'm sure I probably will hear it. But for me, as being African-American, that word really bothered me today. But I just want to make sure that we are a city of laws, a country of laws, and right now, I think the kind of law is applying in this situation.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. And I'll, I guess, restate what I said last time, which is that I was on the council before that voted the original project down before mediation. I actually was one of the no votes. And when I take a look at the mediation, mediated agreement that they have, and the issues that the applicant took care of, that essentially took off the last leg of the stool, so to speak, to have any, in my opinion, basis by which we could vote this down, in my personal opinion, and I'll be voting accordingly. Okay, motion to close, anyone? Sorry, thank you. We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, are you comfortable reading item 33, sir?
Yes. And I need legal counsel advice first. So we had a long primer course on making motions and that sort of thing. I think, I can't recall exactly the extent of the motion that was made at first reading, because it was a couple weeks ago. So how exhaustive or extensive a motion would you recommend as related to this today's second reading?
I would, I would recommend, obviously, you need to read the ordinance, and then I would recommend that you make at least a couple findings in support of your, of your motion. And you might point to the testimony, or you might point to the staff report.
Okay, thank you. And this is a, this is the equivalent of a PD, I guess?
Yes, this would be a site plan control district.
All right. Sorry for, to the audience for the delay. I'll move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance residing property in general vicinity of 101, 105, and 109 and 111 North Meridian Avenue, and 102 and 106 North 11th Street, in the city of Tampa, Florida, and being more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification CD1, Channel District, and CD3, Channel District, to CD2, Channel District Residential Multifamily, comma, Retail Sales, and Air Conditioned Storage, Close Print. Provide an effective date, provide an effective date, period. And so I will add to that, that I've moved this ordinance, because I do believe that the petitioner has met its burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence that the development as conditioned and shown on the site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and city code, specifically as the finder of fact that this body is, city council. I would refer to the staff report that speaks to the compatibility with the surrounding area, the efficient and sustainable use of the land and infrastructure, the integration of different land uses, and specifically related to this project, the fact that the storage unit is an acceptable approved use in our Channel District code, if they meet the criteria established by the code, and staff has testified that they do meet those I'll accept or consider any additional comments from my fellow board members, council members, if any.
Any comments from council? Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Goode's. Let's record our votes.
Motion carried with Miranda and Nascako voting no, and Seidro being absent.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and I'll defer to Mr. Goode's, if you wish, but I would like to make a motion to ask staff and legal to report back to us within sixty days at their discretion in regard to a date.
And I was going to ask that all motions be done at the end during...
I know, but I want to do it here while people are here.
I mean, you can note, you can notice...
Mr. Martin, don't leave.
You can notice, and if I may, Councilman Dingfelder, that's the second time I've asked that, you can make your motions at the end, I have no problem with that, but let's defer all motions until the end.
All right, well, then, I'll make it clear...
You can give your notice of intent.
I'll make it clear that at the end of the meeting, pursuant to the chair's request, I will make a motion that staff come back to revise, or to consider revision of the Channel Side rules, specifically as related to storage and any other suggestions that the community might, might need. I don't think the Channel Side code has been revised in a while. This is obviously is an important issue to Channel Side residents and owners, and if it's something that needs looking at, we'll do it in this public forum at a date, at an appropriate date this fall. So I just, I will make that motion later in the meeting.
And I'm going to be supportive of that. I feel the same way. In this situation, I think our legal hands are tied, but we can change it for the future. Thank you. Okay, and did you want to say something, ma'am?
Kristin Moore, Legal Department. There is also a resolution for the bonus provision agreement that goes with this, if you would like to move that resolution.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, we have a second by Councilman Goode's. All in favor? Any opposed?
No. Motion carried with Nascako, Miranda voting no, and Seidro being absent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to give you a reminder, relative to this project, just like any other project or any other votes of council, there is a thirty-day appeal period, that agreed or interested parties have the right to appeal. So I would caution council as to speak specifically to the facts of this particular case of question about it prior to that period running.
Thank you, sir. And that is true. Okay, and I've been informed by CCTV that they're going to need a little bit of a break to get the tape transition or whatnot. It'll probably take about 10:15 minutes, so how about we take a 25-minute break? And is that...
I'm not saying three o'clock we want to work through, but we've got to say something. It's full, I don't know what they want to do.
That's what I was going to ask, you all, 20 minutes to give them? Okay. How about we return at 12:45? Is that good for everybody, 12:45? Okay, we motion to come back at 12:45. We'll be back. Thank you.
Yes.